To do that. Got it?
We've got a screen.
You guys be, okay. Okay, we're being live streamed. Watch what you say. It's all being recorded. And we'll be used to get student card a lot, all that. January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission. First item of business, the rural call. Ms. Hanning here, Mr. Platt here, Ms. Corning here. Hinkley is here, and that's our full roster. We are presently. One vacancy that's up for grabs. Would you been listening wants to apply or has a good suggestion? Okay. For sure, the resistance is approval of the agenda. Just as a note. The point of the agenda is to let the interested public know what we're up to. Applications to the pickup first. As first extract timelines, there are various projects. Typically in order of nearness to completion or urgency. So that's how we end up with the basic structure of the agenda. A pretty long list today, but many of the ones towards the end of the list are our kind of back burner update issues. So it isn't as intimidating as. It might seem that some nineteen items. Okay, for the fact. Are there any? Thoughts on the agenda from commission? Issues, corrections. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
This chair.
Your second.
Second.
Okay, it's by flat, the second by according to improve the agenda as distributed. Through the discussion, here in the scene done, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Passes animus. Thank you. Um, next item, we have two sets of minutes. Let me in the December fourteen regular meeting. I had a few thoughts on that, but let's do a round robin. Anybody want to comment on the December fourteen minutes? Um, okay, just there was a typo, uh, item. Room number four, Hinkley disclosed that he had spoke to different members. Are you following?
Yeah.
Okay, it just needs to be spoken. Um, and then right below that, it says the chairman, the chairman of the discussion will be conducted that just to smooth that down under public application rather than other disclosures. Organizationally, small matter. Then, let's see. Yeah, then I just, as I was reading through it, there was a, the, and Joe does our menace for Dana and others. Benefit to. It's always a balance to how detailed do you get versus making it kind of a table of contents of the. Of the video. At one point, you see, right, Commissioner Platt asked Matt Ayers about the requirement for an SSI for this subdivision. Which kind of was a cliffhanger for me, well, actually to be said. So, just as a, as a thought, we don't have a specific, okay, look at the statement as commissioner. Platt asked Matt Ayers about the requirement for an SSI. I'm under the flutie variance request.
Page three.
Yeah, page, page three. Uh, again, it's, it's, I don't know if there, there is no hard or fast rules on this, but. We don't need a transcript, but something like that, as I said, that kind of caught my eyes. That's sort of the cliffhanger. If you wanted to throw something in there, it might be appropriate. And. I thought it might be helpful down on page five, towards the bottom, the statements. Commissioner Hanning talked about work being DQ. Similar to February. I wonder if we have a date on that. I'm just thinking of somebody reading the minutes that might benefit from.
February twenty-two, but. You want the exact date?
Can you go back? I just think that would be a useful addition as I try to put myself in the position, someone who's. Who's reading the minutes.
It's February eleven.
February eleven, Commissioner Hanning informs us. Hey. Okay, that's all I had on that set. If there are no other. Benmans, corrections, questions, suggestions. And those are acceptable changes. I'd take a motion to approve those amendments.
I'm going to accept the management, he's earned for the point point two, uh, meeting as presented in the directions.
Second.
I'll take it for a second.
James, we have a question in second to approve those discussion of that motion. Seeing now, I'll pay her say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. We've begun the minutes of January three special meeting. Same offer, anybody have a thought of what's having read them? I had one, just again, to. If anyone wants to really know what goes on, they can listen to the recordings, but of course the recording is going astray sometimes. So it's useful to. To have the. Minutes reflect that. I think Mr. Greller kind of looking at that relevant memorable or item C. Chairman Hinkley introduced the item in public hearing was open. I think Mr. Greller was speaking on behalf of Albany County groundwater advocates. And that might be useful included. Okay, that's all I had. The other thoughts, that's an acceptable addition to minutes. I'll take a motion to approve this event. I'm ready to accept the minutes for the January third point point three special meeting was presented corrections. Thank you for second. We are mentioned rules either. Okay, move it second to approve the best evented. Further discussion of motion, seeing that all there say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, disclosures, conflict of interest. Is there anything anybody would like to share with us before we get going by way of? I don't business that they might have some personal financial interest in or, or some. Something that they've learned that. They would like to share with us. Mr. Hanning.
Mr. Chair, I did follow up with our county engineer Jake Schneider. That's a question about stormwater runoff for the subdivision. And I don't know if I learned anything. But just, just investigated how the storm water actually flows off of the, off of the parcel into the adjacent.
Okay, if that becomes appropriate to discuss during our. Assessment of fluid, then throw it in. Mr. Platt. Ms. Corning.
No.
Um, I would only offer that I, and you saw the evidence that coming from Mr. Gerch. I had a brief discussion with. Mr. Heim, who's here today, uh, to clarify. Some of the material that he had sent us. In support of the Einstein. I can share that with you when we get to that point. Otherwise, I have nothing more. Okay. Introduction of new planning and zoning commission member. It might be appropriate. To introduce both ways. So let's, let's start down here. Let's, uh, introduce yourself. What, what? What's your background? Why are you interested to be in here? And then we'll give you the benefit of the other three of us as well. So what, what's the story? Where are you?
I'm Diana Corning. I've been chair for since nineteen seventy-seven. Often on and I. Interested in the well being of this community and. It's a way to contribute.
Thank you.
More handy. I happen to be Diana's neighbor and have lived in the neighborhood of River. Uh, since two thousand and nine. I became interested in planning and zoning issues when I served on the city. Uh, planning commission and adjustment board. Um, and when a position became available midterm on this commission. I designed that position and applied here and I just recently I'm starting my, my. First full term.
Um, burning, I currently service the chair. My association planning and zoning started in earnest back two thousand and eleven. Uh, so I've spent more time. In the audience that I have on the commission, uh, but have some background. Public perspective, which I think is useful to now see what it looks like from the other side of the fence. Uh, and that was a part of my interest in. And accepting appointment. Uh, so I have. I was appointed. January. Twenty-two. No, gender twenty-one. So I will be the next victim, I guess. But anyway. Same as, as the rest of you, just interested in, uh, helping. Albany County move forward into a well planned future.
It's black. And I'm Michael Platt, and I have to finish my first year on the plan of the mission. And I ended up on the plan of the mission because I stumbled in the bureau's office one day and by the time that took this. I got picked. But I am genuinely interested, hopefully been discussing and working out the past year. I am something general. And I hope that in some small way I can help with becoming part of it too, just for express.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, as per our standard procedure, we'll look at applications first. Um, and the procedure has been. That we will hear a report from the staff. Backing up the written report that was distributed with the packet for the meeting. Then we will invite comments from the applicant and they will stand for questioned after you threw it at the staff. These are officially public hearings on the application, so. We will. Have a public comment period in that spirit. If you are going to comment on one of the applications before us today, please state your name and your address and confine your. Remarks to three minutes, please stay on topic. Um, and if you have something else you'd like to bring to the attention, planning and zoning, we have a. Opportunity at the end of the meeting for more free form comments. Thought you'd like to share with us about what we should or shouldn't be doing in general, uh, plans for the future. Uh, and we'll get to those at the, at the end of the agenda. Okay. Um, once we close the public hearing, then the commissioners will have a discussion amongst themselves. And proceed to a motion on how to dispose of the application, typically either approval, approval of conditions, denial or. Uh, tabling it for further discussion later date. First item up is the flutie subdivision application SD. Oh, it's preliminary and final plat SD oh nine twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Well, we'll present the staff report on that and stand for questions.
All right. Uh, the applicant and owner is Mike Flutie located at three fifty-three Roger Canyon Road. The request is approval of a preliminary and final plat and subdivision permit. Current zoning is rural residential and agricultural. Current use is residential. Access will be from Roger Canyon Road. There were some reviews. Chelsea Matthews County Assessor had no concerns. Karen Bowman, senior GIS analyst had no concerns. Jake Schneider, county engineer, had concerns about the preliminary and final flats and the engineering report, but they were taken care of. Rob Fisher, superintendent of Rhode Bridge had no concerns and Laramie Rivers Conservation District. Holly Dyer discussed the vegetation erosion and wells. Her full comments can be seen in the review section. Uh, the summary of subdivision, uh, permit requirements. Water, both lots will be provided by the well. Lot one has a well, uh, sewer, both lots will have individual systems. Lot one has a subject system. Lot two will need to apply for a small waste wastewater system through Albany County Planning Department. Uh, Wyoming DEQ review was not required as this is a small subdivision. Storm drainage report was completed and reviewed by Jake Schneider. Utilities Rocky Mountain Power will provide electricity. Gas will be provided by private propane tanks. Uh, postal service is available in the area. No new roads are proposed. No road maintenance is required. Financial assurance is also not needed. Fire protection will be provided by Albany County. And notice has been provided in accordance with Albany County planning and subdivision regulations, chapter four, section nine. Findings of fact, the summary of subdivision permit requirements, applicant responses and staff analysis as referenced in this report. Are affirmatively adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information. And the requested and required findings, documentation, notice and notations have been satisfied. By the applicant and the same are incorporated, incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. Staff analysis, uh, this subdivision is being proposed in an already developed area. Lots will be accessed from Robert Hating Road. The addition of one lot in this area should not create any substantial impacts to the area. The preliminary and final plaque complies with the standards of the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. Um, a little bit of history about the process that we've been on for the flutie. At the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two planning and zoning commission meeting. In the October fourth, twenty twenty-two Board of County Commissioners meeting, a zoning change. From agricultural to rural residential was approved for the potential lot two. At the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two planning and zoning commission meeting and the January third, twenty twenty-three. Board of County Commissioners meeting, a variance request, uh, from the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter three. Section three, D six A was approved for the parcel. Staff recommends approval of the flutie subdivision preliminary and final plat application. SD zero nine two-two and a subdivision permit adopting and incorporating the staff analysis. Findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff.
Thank you. Questions? Over staff. Sam.
Jim. We have questions. Um, so I just want to verify that the access for Roger Kane was from the existing driveway and that a. Permit easement will be done to avoid having another entrance.
Correct. Yep.
And in general. Is it not until the permit for a small, uh, wastewater system was submitted that? An applicant needs to provide like the drawing showing that they can indeed. The building, the subject system, the replacement absorption field area, you know, the private well, all within the necessary setbacks. Right, maybe the cotton tail subdivision where that provided early on spoiling. Like getting a visual for how things are.
Right, we have a general size that we go by. Um, anything pretty much over two acres is. Going to fit. Going to fit. So this being five acres. It's going to fit. Wastewater has a fifty foot setback. So that's a pretty easy one. And then. I'm not sure what the residential setback is. Can you?
From property lines.
Property lines. So.
I guess my last question, and I don't know if, if, if it would have been one to ask Jake or one to get a reply from him about. What, what is the tipping point of concern on increasing the storm water runoff?
Yeah, that's a Jake question.
That's amazing. And I'll ask the applicant. Okay, thanks very much.
Yep.
Others, thoughts, Sam? That's a good class. I had just a couple thoughts on the staff report. Uh, first of all, I liked that history section for those of us who. Who are doing a lot of other things and then I tried to get back on track with these. I would ask that when this goes forward to the kind of commission. Under that request for variance that you explain what it was. For. Just. It's again, it was kind of a teaser that we improved the variance that would be useful for the record, but what that. What that was about. Um, and then a fine point. That it was brought to our attention at. One of our recent meetings. In the, in the public notice. Which I rarely read. It says the public is invited to attend to be assumed teleconferencing or to submit written comments. It struck me that that sentence was slightly ambiguous in terms of whether the public was invited to come in person. So this is a feedback on kind of your template of the public notices. You might. Be a little more precise. The public is invited to attend in person or via. Sure. So let's see, that's all I had. And then just a general invitation to our new member, the staff reports are for our benefits. So if there's anything in staff report that you'd like to see. It's their report to us. David and Joe marinate these things all day, every day, but there's always exercise and writing and suspicion. That case, the audience is us. We're all invited to ask for more or less. Feel free to. The way is, you feel like it's a treasure map sometimes, but they, they do a real nice job for us, set these things up. Um, that's all I had. Would the applicant like to address anything? Mr. Ruff, looks like you got to answer.
Uh, yes, I do. I, um, I'd like to address Ms. Hanning's question if I could. Um, future, um. In short, yes, uh, we did consider, uh, the increase in, um, storm water from development of the new lot. Um, I use, I worked with Jake, um, to, to develop what we believe was an acceptable model. Uh, you know, comparable house being built on that five acre lot, um, access, a gravel access drive. Concrete patios, any, any of the, uh, you know, things that you might see. And it was found that the storm water increase was less than a CF, uh, less than one cubic foot per second. It was a fraction of a cubic foot per second. And, um. Uh, Jake found that acceptable. To, um. An acceptable increase to go into the Roger Canyon Road, uh, right away. And that's, um, in my, uh, stamp report. To the county, um, that was accepted. So that's, uh. Uh, does, does that help, uh, with your concerns?
Mr. Chair, thank, thank you, um, Mr. Mr. Ralph for answering the question. I mean, Mike, I, I agree with the assumptions that you made about the potential size of the structure. Um, and the, the numbers that went into the calculation. Well, I guess the question I have is, at what point are you concerned? Like, when, when would you call it not a significant? Uh, increase, what, what amount of increase, uh, cubic feet per second storm water would tip the scales in the direction of?
That, that would be when we're significantly changing, um. Impervious gra, or pervious ground like green area to something around like fifty to sixty percent impervious. So if we were to put, say, a parking lot. In that, um, five acres, I would be concerned and recommend a detention pond. As. The majority of the lot will still remain what we refer to as green area. And also, you know, it will, the soil will absorb, you know, so absorb storm runoff. Um, that is, that, uh, that does not trigger any concern for me. And then, uh, I guess to continue on, yeah, i- if, if we were to add, you know, a significant amount of pavement, if there were to be like a. Twenty car parking lot. Um, that usually triggers those requirements or, um. An analysis of, uh, effects on downstream. Um, effects, and that's usually more seen in commercial construction. Residential construction is not considered, um, you know. Especially out in the county and, and these, what we refer to as ranchettes, these five acre lots. It's not, it's not consider, um, not generally considered, um, a storm water problem.
Okay, thank you. In, in this case, I was concerned primarily because. Uh, well, first of all, I go back and forth past that property several times a day, so I'm familiar with the area. Uh, but the, the way the storm water would drain would, would be to the north. Which happens to be, um, a lot that is sort of in a, a, a low basin, if you will, without any culverts. And the, eventually the water would, would. Top out over rifle canyon road or rifle range road and keep heading north where eventually it does come to a culvert. But I, I just was concerned that because the existing structure on the lot to the north is. Developed in a low area, I was just concerned about making sure. That even though it's a fraction of, of a, of a CFS. Um, that didn't somehow tip things into flooding that house. Um, but it, it looks to me like it has a way to escape over rifle range road and not, uh. Create a problem for the, the house that's in existence there. So I, I, I convinced myself that shouldn't be a problem, but it got me wondering, you know, what is, what is the CFS that suddenly becomes significant? You know, is it, is it one, is it two, is it ten? Um, and, and I, I can follow up with the county engineer because it sounds like it's really the call he's making. Um, so I'm happy to follow up more with, with Mr. Schneider on that. And thanks for explaining, um, the storm water runoff from your perspective. I appreciate it.
Anytime.
Other questions for Mr. Ruff? Okay. There's none. Um, is there anything else you'd like to add? Thank you for being available to us.
Nope, nothing added this time. Thank you.
That looks like that thing is in good order. Um, all right, let's, uh, open the, the public comment period on this. Do we have, you know, for the public wishing to address this subdivision application? I'm not seeing, uh, if you're on the Zoom, you want to reuse the raise hand option or just dive in and speak, we can be informal with a smaller group. Uh, seeing and hearing none and none in the, in the room. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
A second.
So we decided to close the public hearing on the flutie subdivision application, um, discussion of motion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. Uh, okay. What is our? Desires to dispose of this application? Is there, or the discussion amongst the commission, right?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm moved to recommend the board kind of which is approval of the flutie subdivision preliminary final plating SD S zero nine S twenty-two. And a subdivision permit adopting incorporating staff analysis finding the fact and principle of. A statement second for it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, um, now that is open for discussion. Is there any to be offered? Looking to my colleagues and seeing them. Um, all right, let us put that to a vote, Ms. Hanning.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Mr. Corning.
Aye.
Hinkley, aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving to the Einstein subdivision, file plat SD. Twelve twenty-two, and we have a report from staff.
All right, the applicant and owner is game a knife bar. Located at two fourteen North Fork Road. The request is to approve a final flat application and a subdivision permit. Direct zoning is rural residential. Current use, uh, there's one residence on the property and lots will be accessed from East North Fork Road and North Fork Road. There were some reviews. Chelsea Matthews County Assessor had no concerns. Karen Bowman, Senior GIS Analyst. Asked for a statement on the plat stating the vacation of the westerly portion of law twenty-one. This has been taken care of. Uh, Jake Schneider, county engineer, had no concerns. Rob Fisher, superintendent of Rhode Bridge, had no concerns. Holly Dyer, ranchland and watershed resource specialist of the Laramie Rivers Conservation District. Uh, does not have any additional comment, uh, than what was provided in January. Uh, why, why dot Ryan Shields had no comments. Summary of subdivision permit requirements. Water will be provided by, uh, from individual wells. Sewer, uh, lots will be provided to a systems by individual systems that will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. There is an existing small wastewater system that serves the existing house, which is proposed lot one. Uh, what, uh, WDQ review was completed for this application and received a non adverse recommendation. Storm drainage report was complete for this proposal interviewed by Jake Schneider, county engineer. Rocky Mountain Power provides power to the area and gas is provided, uh, by Black Hills Energy. Postal service is existing in the area. No new roads are proposed. Road maintenance, the applicant will need to pay into the. Existing road maintenance provider, the North Fork Owners Association. Financial assurance is not required. Uh, fire protection will be provided by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations, chapter four, section nine. Findings of fact, the summary of subdivision permit requirements, applicant responses and staff analysis as referenced in this report. Are firmly adopted as the findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information. That the requested required findings, documentation, notice and notations have been satisfied by the applicant and the same are incorporated herein. Inclusion of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Uh, some more history on this one, um. At the May eleventh, twenty twenty-two planning and zoning meeting and the June seventh, twenty twenty-two Board of County Commissioners meeting. The variance request from the county regulations for a small subdivision within an already platted subdivision requiring a review and recommendation from WDEQ. Was denied for this application. The applicant has since followed county regulation for the review and recommendation from WDEQ. At the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two planning and zoning meeting, the Einzpar preliminary plat application. Was re- recommended to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the preliminary plat application. Along with the following conditions, that the commissioners' concerns regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of impacts to water quality will be addressed. And those concerns will be put in writing. At the December sixth, twenty twenty-two Board of County Commissioners meeting. The Einzpar preliminary plat application was approved along with the following conditions. That the commissioners concerned regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of impacts to groundwater quality. Will be addressed and those concerns will be put in writing by the chair and that the applicant pay into the road maintenance for that district. Staff analysis. The final plat complies with the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations, this subdivision is being proposed in. The North Fork subdivision of Centennial, the lots would be accessed from North Fork Road and East North Fork Road. Staff recommendation is to approve the Einzpar subdivision final plat application. SD one two 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 and a subdivision permit adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact and conclusions of law. As each are stated in this staff report.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Ralph? Start with Ms. Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Ralph is, uh, they're kind of the same kind of question as for including um. In regards to where replacement each fields are located. I, I just see that on the original uh, small wastewater system permit that they obtained from the existing. System, the replacement each field at that time was noted to be on what now would be the, the other lot. And I assume there's plenty of setbacks still relative to the, where the well is located. Uh, for that replacement area to change. Would, would you would say with the size lot, it shouldn't be an issue?
It shouldn't be an issue, um. That would be a question for Lisa Erickson, the person who does our wastewater, though. I don't touch the wastewater stuff.
Okay, but she, she, of course, is here.
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Clark and I are there.
I am, I'm gonna miss this. I tried to find in the materials, but so were the um, impacts to groundwater quality, were those addressed?
Uh, yeah, they were put in writing. Uh, they're in the comment section or the review section, sorry. At the very, they're the very last ones that were put in the review section. So right before the maps.
Right before the mapping.
Yep.
What page would that be?
Uh, the very bottom.
Sorry, I'm not that familiar with these documents.
Yeah, they get, they get kind of like, this, the sequence was that a letter was written to the applicant, they responded. There's most of his response and there is.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like to take a minute to read those, um, that would be fine, we can come back around. But you're, but you.
Um, I think I can look at all of the things.
Okay, uh, and then just for Miss Kornick's benefit, what, what we normally do is, is do a round robin. Uh, in order of seniority, but by no means does that meant you're only shot, so we can go around thirteen times if we need to. But that's just kind of been our protocol, uh, so uh, let's move on. I guess that, that's me in the, the seat at the moment. Um, and then I pick it up on this part, it's a comment, I had the same one, I, I think your history then. Where it says should be put in writing, you, you should memorialize that a letter was written. And approved at our December fourteen meeting, that would be a logical part of the staff reports that goes forward to the, to the commissioners. Uh, and then I think somewhere we need a finding, I, I. The way the staff report is laid out, I, I don't think it captures the, the uh. Spirit of it being approved with a condition and was that condition met? Uh, so I think that coming out of our discussion this evening, we will want an affirmative finding that the condition was met. Uh, which is what I anticipate, but we haven't got there yet. So, so just in the history, it would be useful to refer to those various letters and dates. To, to have it up more complete. And the one that of course that, that I've followed was the issue of groundwater impacts. In your history, you know that the applicant um, agrees to pay into the road maintenance. How was that? Condition captured, is that the matter that they obligated themselves to do that or what became of that?
This is required by the staff report.
So it's a requirement going forward from this point. Correct, okay, so we haven't, we haven't. Seen a response to that, but it's a condition of our approval. Yes, we're definitely, right, got you. Okay, that's, that's all I had is, and, and how you want to write that or how we will fashion our, our motion. When we get to that point, I would like to explicitly capture whether or not a condition is met. Make sense?
Sure.
Okay. And that's all I had for staff, uh. Other questions, Mr. Kornick, who you've had a chance to look at that and we, we'll come back to the discussion amongst ourselves, there are questions for Mr. Ralph.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, does this suggest the concern that I want to get their response, but.
And that's. I, I don't think that's a question that staff is responding to. We might learn something, go for it.
I will, I will not be answered.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, we, I see we have horsepower in the audience, saw that. Um, all right, let's, let's follow the procedure here and. Ask if there are any comments or if there are questions. I see we have the Mr. Ralph, Minister Heim in the audience today. Uh, available to us as I said, you're both here as representatives of this applicant. Um, you don't need to say anything, um. I don't have any specific questions, uh. Uh, so if you'd like to stand for questions or you'd like to make an affirmative statement, uh, Mr. Heim has stepped up to the plate here.
Chairman Hinkley and board members, I'm here with Western Engineering, we are the ones that responded to the letter that was sent to us. Uh, so we're here on behalf of the applicant. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have as we go forward either now or when you guys have discussion, so.
Uh, thank you, and I, I was not anticipating your appearance, it wasn't necessary, but we appreciate it in case there were any questions, uh, as I indicated in disclosures. I had a brief conversation with mine, uh, regarding his letter, uh, which I. And then that was subsequently distributed with the packet. Because now is as good a time to explain that as later, um, I just had a feeling that in the initial response. We didn't quite close the loop on how did we get to the numbers, so I. For the record, I ideally, in a signed in report, we have a, a trail that with some effort, one could reproduce the results. And I think with the additional information that the applicant has supplied, and we have satisfied that. To where I don't have any further questions on how the numbers that were before us were arrived at. Uh, so I don't have any further questions. Oh, um, well, I don't have the letter in front of me, but uh, we had asked that, uh. The hydraulic conductivity of the aquifer be explained. In a manner that we found acceptable, that was clear back when this first came up, and it's the same thing we discussed in the application. So what the applicant has done is gone back and looked at pump tests rather than perk tests to satisfy that condition. The results of the uh, analysis of local pump tests were presented in the letter we received. As just, here's the number under fifty-six. And then my question was just, where'd you get that number? Uh, it's not a difficult question. Uh, and as I say, has been quite satisfactory addressed. Definitely, yeah, that is why you're, you're concerned. Uh, and I can. Flat has brought up a, a copy of the little, your, that you're about like. To discuss how those entries were made, if you'd like, at some point. Um, okay, other questions related to? What Mr. Ralph or Mr. Heim can provide us?
I have one question for the mind, please. And this doesn't change anything, but I'm just curious. Uh, I'm looking at uh, the numbers for. And use a thickness thirty feet. And I am curious why you use that, uh. Yeah, I, that, that is a question.
So in that letter back and forth, we did discuss a little bit that there was a typo in the chapter twenty-three application that we sent. So part of that saturated thickness that we look at in order to do the model, we had a typo in there. And I believe it said it was twenty some feet and it actually was significantly thicker than that. So when we use these models, we look at that saturated interval. And then we put it in there and it's a large driving factor in the models. So we just looked at area wells, we looked at fluctuations in water levels in those wells and then used that number to put into the model. Does that make sense? These models are, are very interesting. Some, some of the numbers in these models. Are a sledgehammer on effects in the models. And some of the numbers don't modify things as much. And when you get in and you work with these a bunch. Like that volumetric soil moisture content, that number makes a huge difference in the output of that model. So that hydraulic conductivity, which is where Bernard asked if we could go back and look at those pump tests, just like we did with Howell. To verify that hydraulic conductivities are, are in line with what we had originally put in. When I went back and averaged the hydraulic conductivities for the pump tests in the area. The number we had originally used in there was fifteen feet per day. And it changed it to sixteen point one, so when we modify that in the model, it had no effect on it.
Okay, I, I didn't expect that so well. I'm, I'm talking about the thickness used for the calculation BB. Um, that's thickness of thirty feet.
For which number are you looking at? For the, the depth, the seasonal high groundwater, is that?
No, 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 the, the calculation of BB, the thickness of they said.
Oh, sure, yeah, so we just arrived at that at, at the water levels in wells.
Well, my question is why thirty feet now?
Because that's the, the amount of, so there's. There's a, a section at the top that's an unconfined aquifer, and then we go into a different set of strata, which is separated by shale. So we, that water level and then down to the top of that shale is a saturated interval and it's thirty feet.
Oh, okay, so that's what you're saying, that's where the error was, it's not eleven feet, it's.
Correct.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah, so we, we had a typo.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's fine, so, so yeah, we've looked at those area wells and looked at the geology.
That's my question, so.
Yep.
And, and I knew either way there wasn't, you know, a big problem, about a problem all night, concentrate, right?
Or let, let, let me add to that, the, the thirty feet is a, is a default that, that, that.
Yeah, and I understand that it's a thick sandbox, the idea is that contaminants come into that surface area, so that's the main thing to, to flow it.
With correction to depth of water, however, the saturated alluvium is reduced to eleven meters of correct. So one could argue that eleven feet is the appropriate number of thirty. Uh, just FYI, when one does that, it doesn't make a significant difference.
Right.
So, yeah, I believe that the concept that Commissioner Platt is bringing forward, it's myself. It's easy convincing that uh, the answer is sufficiently robust, that one can apply. A different saturated thickness. Arguably, in this case, if you were to write off the, that's described as a sandy or silty sand. Which has some transmissibility to do, through that up, you'd still have twelve feet of saturated material through which groundwater flows.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, and that's the thing to bear in mind with this, we're not talking about a bunch of septic systems, we're just talking about one. So we don't have a huge volume of nitrate going in from that single septic system, so. Right, exactly, so that's low to begin with, the ambient is low, and then we're putting in a little bit from one system, so. It's tough to make that number change a whole lot, but.
And then that, that just, just. Set that conceptually, that the approach that DQ takes to these and, and we certainly follow suit or have so far is. Is it's, it's a pure dilution model, so it's to take off on the solution to pollution, there's dilution, um, and. The number ten has significance through the Q's regulation and a municipal, a po car supply, that would be. A, a hard standard, of course, by EPA, it's a benchmark for us, but, um, but the concept under which DQ proceeds is that. The aquifers of Wyoming may be impacted to nine point nine. And that's an acceptable trade off with our desired bill houses. Would long prosper. All right, uh, further questions, and we've taken a little hydrogeologic progression there, but. To get purpose of that. Okay, uh, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you guys.
Um, all right, let us move on to public, the public hearing portion of this particular application, um. That is now open, are there any members of the public who would like to address the commission regarding the Einzpar subdivision final plat application? If you're on Zoom or in hand or to speak up. Seeing none, uh, nor in the audience, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Sir, a second, a second. We've decided to close the public hearing, all favor say aye. I oppose, same sign. Okay, we are through with public comment, uh, back to the commission, what's further discussion? A suggestion on how you'd like to dispose of this, uh, I would. Follow my earlier suggestion that if we're going to have a motion to approve that it include a explicit. Uh, acknowledgement that our conditions had been met. So what wording would you prefer? Well, I think the way that uh, staff had set up our, the motion. Recommended through the, no, I'm looking at that more simply. It doesn't say anything about connections, yeah, that's her, I'm maybe.
Well, excuse.
Okay, I actually, uh, option two does. Then I will, I will turn my colleagues loose on the appropriate, like, phrase motion, uh, if I requested it and include that there. With pleasure. Mr. Chairman, I, I'm moved to recommend to the board of county commissioners approval of Einzpar subdivision final plat application. SD dash twelve S twenty-three. And a subdivision current adoption, corporate and staff now, who's finally back and who's, uh, has stayed in the staff report along with the condition. Which has been met. What if you have that introduction has been, with the condition that they explain. Impacts groundwater has been met, which is. Your intention, yes, sir. Uh, how do we best say that going forward?
Mr. Chair, it's sort of like.
Mr. Chairman, sort of like. It incorporates not only the staff analysis, finds the facts and conclusion of law. It as well as. The letter dated December.
Noting that. Uh, the previous commission that impacts the groundwater quality be addressed has. Now, do we need to say that?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend. Right, I move that we recommend the board conference approval of Einstein's final flat application SD dash twelve dash twenty two. And a subdivision for adopting corporate and staff analysis, finding the fact which is all as seen in staff work. And noting that the concerns with impacts of groundwater. Body having that.
We understand the motion. Is there a second? Is there discussion of that motion? Please.
Yeah, does the part about the paying into the road maintenance district need to be explicit or is that already?
But my understanding of installation was that that carries forward as a condition by virtue of the fee instead.
But that need to be in our motion.
So that does not need to be in. Other discussions of the motion before. Take a vote, Miss Hanning. You don't need to stick around. Representative as far appreciate your willingness to show up and give us a little education here. But you're excuse to care to be. And thank you. Okay, next application for us is the Comnet Tower application, UCT oh one twenty two.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. The application that we have here is for a tower permit. The applicant is SEC SAC Wireless on behalf of Comnet. I will note that. Jeremy Boone is on the. Zoom, he's he's representing the applicant in this application. On for their company. What's being requested is approval of a tower for installation on ninety five foot. Monopole to telecommunications tower. The the property is. Is currently being used for, well, it's zoned agricultural, so it's a ranch, I believe. Um, this was sent out for reviews or receive reviews from the following. The county engineer Jake Snyder Snyder. Review requested that the stamped. Uh, tower structuring foundation plans be provided. Albany County Fire District Number One. Luke Hawkins chairman cited no objections to this application. Um, Wyoming game and fish reviewed it had no concerns. Um, Department of Wyoming Department of Transportation Taylor Moford, the District One Traffic Engineer. Um, noted that access permits are required for this project. For both demolition of existing tower and. Um, direction of the new tower, learning rivers conservation district had no comments. Notice was provided by posted sign publication certified million is required. Um, SEC Wireless on behalf of Comnet is proposing to remove an existing seventy five foot vulnerable. Tell them a communications tower at twelve hectare road and replace it with a ninety five foot monopole telecommunications tower. This tower will accommodate eighteen eighteen and T and first responders network authorities, high speed wireless broadband network. Um, this process project will be accessed off a highway to. Highway eleven, Wyoming highway eleven. The applicant addressed visually impacts, environmental impacts, co-location requirements. Stair lighting, screening, buffering, general licenses and air traffic safety is required. And he provided all the other required information. Will note that they they also addressed. On those comments from Jake Schneider, we received the documents that needed that were required to be stamped. We received those. They're also being back in. Um, quick staff analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts of this project, the. Setback standards for the towers, one foot from the property line or lease lines for every one foot of tower height. The applicant will meet this standard for property lines, but will not meet the standard from these lines. However, the applicant and the property owner have included a fall zone. Um, within their lease in this is a ninety four foot. Um, radius around the tower where the new structure, where new structure with buildings will be prohibited. This fall zone is included in lease agreement. Um, staff believes this meets the intent of the setback with standard and provides. The needed safety for a potential um, tower collapse. Whiteout is requiring an access permit for access from Wyoming highway eleven. Demolition or construction activities on the site shall not be. Begin until white dot authorizes the use of this access. And documentation is provided to the Alvin County Planning Department. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, applicant responses and staff analysis references to this report are adopted as findings of fact reflecting the. Applicant has adequately addressed the specific. Or specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and in compliance with requirements of the Allen County zoning resolution. Staff recommends approval of the Comnet Centennial Tower app. Application adopting incorporating the staff analysis. Finds in fact, if this is a lot, it's featured stated in this this staff report. Do you have any questions for myself?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gertrude. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Maybe this is one for the applicant. Would there have been potential to co-locate? This um, technology on the new. This to be tower or was that not in the line of sight that these towers need for communication?
I think I'll save that one for the applicant. Um, I believe they usually do a study to determine that and. I can't remember off the top of my head what the the documents have provided say about that, but they could answer.
And then my only other question is regarding this drop zone. And so just when you go into the. The very awesome GIS map that you guys put together and just put in twelve hectare. It shows a different location than the map of where the tower is. And I mean, that's just a mailing address thing and that the parcel owned is is much bigger. Then shows up when you when you type in that address. But I I guess my question is, is there any potential for this wider fall zone to land on? Uh, the road? Or is it, would it not land on a?
Um, I mean, that's a good question for the applicant. It does look like the there is a private road, um, the heck creek road. Um, which is is basically a private easement. I'm not sure if it's actually right away. I know it's not a county road. I did confirm that. Um, so the placement of the tower does look like it would fall across the road a bit fell that way. So but but maybe I'm wrong. I mean, we can. Ask the applicant on that, but.
Because of the just looking at the address and seeing where it is on the map, that puts it in a. Uh, a flood zone A. Uh, when that particular address that when it shows up on the GIS map, but. But it sounds like where the tower actually is is not in.
I don't believe it's in a flood zone. No, um, so that parcel is. Is very large. Um, I believe it's more than a section. I mean, it's got pieces from multiple sections.
An artifact or cheap footing in the address.
Yes.
Different from the actual location.
Correct.
Thanks very much.
But I have two questions. Not very important, first one, but you never land. I'm still curious. The tower is ninety five V I, so why is the state something not working?
So the application says, like what was filled out, it said it was ninety five foot. Um, I believe the drawings actually showed it's nine ninety four foot. So, um. Again, that can be answered by the applicant, but I did notice that as well. So I just put down what was on the application or originally submitted, but then. Yeah, you look at the design.
It's my force standard question is if you compare the maps on three fourteen and three fifteen pages three fourteen. Two locations they're identified. One by blue dot, one by orange and red dot. What is the actual location?
Which, say that again, which map?
If you compare the maps and pages three fourteen, three fifteen, there's two different locations identified for that the tower. And and one's got it right, one's got it wrong. And I'm wondering which one's right. I'm I'm guessing it's three fourteen, but uh, you know. That's just my guess.
Um, I'm not sure where three fourteen is. I'm actually looking at this a separate.
So, yeah, so this green dot. Is the proposed. Site and you're looking at this one then, I assume with the blue. The orange. So, yeah, the blue is pointing. Down, it's like a pin. So it's actually where the base is. The orange are address. Okay, so. But here the proposed sites on one side of the road. It's where the the like needle goes.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Just for the record, looking at page three fourteen and three fifteen of the packet, right, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. I I've got them all separated and so I've just pulled up that and so my numbers are different.
That is just confusing. I got a green dot and you see a blue dot and you don't.
The resolution is it's on the north side of the road, is that correct?
So just pointing out that it's not the dot, actually where the dot is. Anyway, that's my question.
This is a luxury for me to have such such. Careful review of my colleagues. I can, oh, I I saw. Um, my only comment, in addition to those of my esteemed colleagues, that in your staff report, it says statement allowing Albany County right. To install communications and on tower request. Now, what tell us about the status of that? Was there such a statement or?
Yes, they provided that to us. Um, I mean, it's basically they just send us a letter saying that. Um, if the county wants to put. You know, their equipment on there, they can do so. Um, I mean, they can still charge a fee or whatever, but we we received that documentation.
I guess that's that's all I had. Further questions for staff? Um, okay, if we have representative of the applicant. Uh, we have online. Uh, you heard the previous comments, Mr. Boone, uh, which like respond to those to start us off and then we may have some additional questions.
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, thank you, of course, for the time, uh, and for, uh, the review of this application. Um, I I know there were three major, uh, questions here. Um, the the first one that was asked, I know was the the potential for co-location. Uh, at. Right now, what we were looking to do initially was to co-locate on the existing tower. Um, but the structure itself. Um, was not determined to be sufficient to, uh, hold the antennas that would help support the first net, uh. Uh, equipment. So if then those antennas were installed onto that existing tower, it would be structurally failing, leading to a potential collapse, which no engineer, of course, would. Sign off on allowing that up there. Uh, which, um, based upon the strategic, uh. Coordination between combat and uh, AT and T to help launch the first net sites. It was best determined to look at the existing site. And we, um. Pretty much what we call in the industry a drop and swap, where we take down the existing tower and replace it with a. More structurally sound tower that is of the newest technology and such. Um, and designed to, of course, ensure co-location of not just comments existing antennas that help service the area. But for the installation of the first net antennas, uh, that will be managed, of course, by AT and T. Um, in regards to the, uh, falling across the private road. Um, the road does fall within the fall zone of the proposed tower, but it also does fall within the fall zone of the existing tower itself. The fall zone itself of ninety four feet was determined by the engineer and the manufacturer of the proposed tower. Um, we had the engineers run the reports determining. Uh, in the unlikely case of any structural failure, if the tower was to fall, it would fall within the ninety foot, uh, ninety four foot zone. Uh, so that is why that specific number was tied to it and in conjunction with the property owners. Um, we had the lease amended to ensure that no structures can be built within that area. Um, but of course I am here for any questions. Uh, once again, I appreciate the time. This is, uh. We're very excited to get the, uh, move forward with this project as it will help out with, uh, the first responders network. By offering the the service to all in the area that would utilize the first net service.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions, Mr. Boone? I think we generally applaud the extension of this kind of service into the rural areas. This is the wave of the future. I think Wyoming. What it offers is rural areas. If we can make them available to people to prosper, then. It's all to be good. And I would note the game of fish comment applauding your. Uh, accommodation of wildlife resources. So there again, a a nice compromise or at least an accommodation, a compromise between our commitment to. To our wildlife open spaces as well as to keep the pace for our rural residents. So thank you for that.
Of course, thank you.
Um, anything else you'd like to add? I think it's a complete application. We're satisfied.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and let's open this one, uh, for the open the public hearing portion of this application. We are now looking for public comments. Either on Zoom or in the room. I see no indication of saying. Uh, I take a motion to close the public hearing on the Comnet Tower application. Uh, motion by the critics second by adding to close the. Public hearing. Same sign opposed. During that and to that, thank you very much. Uh, okay, commission. What's your pleasure for their discussion amongst ourselves and somebody? Uh, bring it to a head with the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll recommend to the. For the county commissioners approval of the Comnet Centennial Tower application. L D C T dash zero one dash twenty two. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law. As each are stated in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by plan. Um, further discussion of that motion? Does everyone understand the motion? And we will take a vote, Miss Hanning.
Hi, Mr. Black.
Thank you very much. And thanks for appearing, Mr. Boone. Appreciate your cooperation and your good work for residents of Albany County. You can continue to attend or not as you please.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, moving on to current planning projects. First item up is plating subdivision regulations. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand we have now. Reached the end of our next quarter day. And. Have we received it? Gertrude reports, no. And and we had talked about inviting comments from specific firms that that happens.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so we did, um. Send out. The. The draft to. Um, local engineers and surveys, surveying folks. Wasn't till this week, um, that we did that. I think it was Monday, maybe. Um, so kind of kind of late in the game, but we did get that out to them. I do, there were, one of the firms said, oh, yeah, we'll we'll look through those, um. And so, I mean, they may have comments, but probably not today if they're not here. So, um, you know, and this this will continue to go through the process. So we'll see what happens today and then.
Yeah, the the. option we're looking at today would be to certify this forward to the board in which is that they will open up a public commentary.
Yes.
So uh uh we can go back around if that would take place. Uh, that's the only question I had upstairs. Do you want to address where we are in the process? What happens now?
Uh, certainly, um, well, so, yeah, uh, we will need to um, I guess invite a public comment uh from anyone present at this meeting uh under eighteen five two two B. Uh, I suppose there uh are a few um changes. Uh, this is a much longer version, as you can tell, um, and the reason for that is simply that it reflects all of the page numbers uh being changed from Latin numerals uh or Roman numerals to Arabic numerals, uh, and also in the last few chapters, uh, mobile home parks, there were a few provisions. Um, I guess internal references uh to other parts of the subdivision resolution um where it's a chapter, you know, IX, so it's changed to nine. Uh, so just those those internal citations and the page numbers um where all those changed, uh, I guess. For chapters six through fifteen. Um, additionally, uh, there is um, a few things that uh this commission needs to make um a decision on before going forward. Or before certifying these amendments uh to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, the major one is on page five dash twenty-one uh under financial assurance. Um, we still had an or provision in there um where there was sort of two options. Uh, is everyone able to find that? I'm not sure of the exact page number in the PDF.
Whoever finds the PDF, page first and following, say again, three, uh, fire, three eighty-two, sorry.
What was the question?
So the question is, um, under that financial assurance requirement, um. There, okay, yeah, there is so an or uh provision. Um, so the first, uh, I guess, option of that documentation satisfactory to the board. Um, that was from the uh previous uh staff report and also are the previous regulations and also state statute eighteen five three or six, it's language from the minimum requirement. Um, the other option is documentation that the subdividers comply with requirements chapter eight of this resolution. Um, where chapter eight is all of the uh requirements for subdivision improvements, um, such as the contract, uh collateral's improvements guaranteed, um. So they accomplish the same same thing, um, so I suppose, yeah, that's a.
So I I get you're suggesting that this is not a substantial change, it's simply an editorial preference, is that?
Well, so this this actually that or statement has been in here throughout, uh, we just haven't made a decision on it, um, because that was a yeah, as an alternative to the statutory language, you could just reference chapter eight.
But, okay, my question goes to the the specific point of we want to make sure that what people have been invited to comment for thirty days is what we are proceeding here. Uh, the threshold question there is, are we making a substantive change? It looks like we should have, could have made this change earlier and we just neglected to. So are you
Um.
Are we free to proceed to certification?
Yeah, for for the fact that uh this exact, as it appears, has been in here throughout. There's always been that or option. We just haven't executed um as to one or the other. So I would say that, yeah, people would be absolutely apprised of um, what, you know, ultimately uh is being proposed.
So so your suggestion is that we make that choice.
Yes.
And then proceed. And and my point of having this discussion before we open the public hearing was just so very clear what we're going into the public hearing with. So a decision on that question would be appropriate at this point, it seems.
Yes, yes, um, I would. I I suppose I would wait until after uh public hearing. Or the public comment portion to make that decision.
Well, alright, if there are public that are wanting to comment, uh, you both can comment on that point. That that would be fine. I just want to make sure that we're that we're fair to the public. But it is, we're talking, were there anything else you want to to point out to us about what what we have distributed to the public comment?
Um, I, well, I suppose, would you like me to give a a general overview so everyone?
Well, I think we've done that in.
Yeah, we have.
I'm just wondering if there was something else like this.
No, that is. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, then by all means, let us open the public hearing on the Plating Subdivision Regulation Amendments as they've been distributed. Are there public comments? Anyone in online? Anybody in attendance? Otherwise, we will close the public hearing. Hearing seen then, I will take a motion to close the public hearing on the Plating Subdivision Regulation Amendments. There, sorry.
I think, Mr. Chair.
We would second it to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All those favor say aye. I oppose, same side. Public hearing is closed. Commission discussions. Uh, let us take up Mr. Air's request. Does staff have a recommendation this between those two alternatives?
I would say chapter eight, but that's, I mean, that's what we've been going under. Um, it actually requires a higher percentage than equal to, um, so prices change or whatever, um, coming has a little bit extra, so if you have and we haven't got to chapter eight yet to like review and mention this to this point, so uh yeah, chapter eight would be mine on my preference.
It's true. And and I think we look to you specifically for a form as well as content, or so feel free.
Yeah, I would, uh, I would certainly recommend chapter eight. Um, I mean, first off, it's cleaner, it directs you to an exact thing. It's not this sort of ambiguous statutory language um that seems to uh run throughout all of the planning and zoning statutes. And it's, it's more more meaningful, and of course, um, you know, we still have the back half of the uh of these of this resolution to get in the future, so.
Yeah.
More fun to be had.
Yeah, procedurally, I I think the when something shows up in two places, it just, it just invites the two not being identical and and potential conflicts, so uh kind of as like in database management, have the the number appear in one place and everybody refer to that, it's just good practice. Thoughts from the commission, question for staff?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair. So so Mr. Mr. Ern, Mr. Gersh, then you would say that chapter eight was more protective of the county's interests than than this, the the statutory language that is the minimum requirement?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Simpler is better. Um, alright, did I suggest we need a motion to make that additional amendment?
Mr. Chair, I move to strike the the first part of I'm sorry, I I this is all in uh chapter five, section.
Section two.
Section two.
Trying to find the part enough up where we started.
Um, it'd probably be better to go, okay, so it's second. I'm sorry, actually, it's section one. Uh, section one, B.
Is it chapter five, section two?
Section one. B, B. Yeah, so this, section one. Right, section one, B. Hmm, section one.
Oh, I see.
B.
E, subdivision per the application. Then it's.
Well, now. Oh, sorry, this is part of the subdivision per application. Yeah, so it's it is section two, my apologies.
So chapter five, section two.
B.
Three.
Three. Uh, starting the paragraph starting with financial assurance to writing everything from documentation satisfactory through providing the facilities period to now start with everything after the or documentation that the subdivider has complied with the requirements of chapter eight of this resolution.
So section B three would consist of financial assurance period documentation that the subdivider has complied with the requirements of chapter eight of this resolution. Okay, that's it. For her motions, your second, I second. For the discussion of the amendment to the amendments. Hearing done, all favor say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same side. And you've made that minor amendment to the amendments as distributed. We're back on the main uh suggestion. We haven't had a motion yet. Um, may I have a motion to certify these forward?
Now, I thought we said.
We just.
Oh, no, that was, um, sorry, that was all. I should not.
Yep, the entire thing. And now the whole thing is an amendment to the subdivision, I guess, and the suggestion before us is to send that forward with our blessing to the cap mission.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Albany County Plating Subdivision Resolution as um as amended.
Amendments as presented.
Oh, amendments as presented.
And amended.
And.
Okay, you would take that from the top.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need to approve the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Resolution amendments presented.
A second, that works. Are we satisfied with that motion, Mr. Airs? Okay, further study. Miss Hattie. Um, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's black.
Aye.
It's part of. Thank you, I thank you very much for your long work on this, and we look forward to applying some more.
Thank you, so I start thinking about subdivision design standards, everything else.
Yeah, uh, and just, and for the record, we what we have done here, and and much of it is stigated by Mr. Air's good work, is to go back through this large document, make sure that it complies with great latest state statutes. Uh, and in the process, have done a lot of discipline. Now, these things tend to accumulate baggage over the years. And I think it's it's great that somebody's starting from scratch and uh and that's what we will be doing with the A P O Z regulation. So that they receive as a coherent whole, both for ease of staff and certainly for ease of public track or insured compliance. Okay, uh, next item on our agenda is the wind energy conversion system regulations. And we have a presentation from the Department of Advisory Committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just take a minute um to introduce um Eric Kogenic. Um, he serves on the Environmental Advisory Committee, and he's due the short straw, so he's here with you today to um talk about their proposal um for changes to the wind energy and solar regulations.
Right, Mr. Chair, this committee will allow me to be here tonight, as David said. My name is Eric Kuzanik, and I represent the Environmental Advisor Committee. Uh, the Environmental Advisor Committee was asked by the Board of County Commissioners, um via Mr. Gersh, to evaluate the Albany County Merchant Wind and Solar Regulations, uh largely due to a great deal of public tensions surrounding the proposed rail timing project. Uh, the EAC formed a subcommittee that are meeting on April first, twenty twenty-one. The subcommittee consisted of EAC members, Mary Curtis Bedwell, Perry Plindell, and myself. Uh. We were charged with going over and then seeing if there was revisions needed with the regulations that stood. Uh, over the next few months to evaluate in public comments, we also reached out to various stakeholder and industry groups for feedback on regulations as written. In addition, uh, we searched uh by N R L's database for other communities' own regulations for points of comparison with ours. Uh, our subcommittee uh read over the existing regulations with an eye to distances, definitions, and reclamation. Uh, the last item due to member Plindell's expertise as his profession is in reclamation. We also paid close attention uh to what public commentators requested and took that which was under the purview of these regulations into consideration. Uh, in regards to these comments, uh, what was found was that many, if not most, of the public comments were already addressed in the current citing regulations. And those that were not, uh, we were not able to be addressed through uh updating this document uh because some were concerned over taxes, wildlife corridors, and such that were outside of what these regulations is meant to address. Uh, the three of us met several times in the fall twenty twenty-one, uh, and then unfortunately, member Plindell had to resign due to moving out of jurisdiction in December twenty twenty-one, leaving the subcommittee chair Bedwell and I to submit a report uh recommendations to the EAC on February third, twenty twenty-two. And uh they were approved at that meeting. So what you have before you tonight are those changes. They're not exactly sweeping. Uh, in all, there are about sixteen changes that we made, uh, largely grammatical. There were some that we updated some language uh and increased some setbacks slightly. Um, and I can go over those changes individually, or I can just I'll leave it to discussion.
Yes, thank you. Um. I I think we should go through page by page at some point, but let's let's do a round of questions here, got out of the chute. Does anybody have a question or at all? Let me follow up on just a couple of things, um. You you said about that you had public comments, but you didn't feel like you couldn't address this. What 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 do you see as the sideboards if you're assigned or?
Oh, those.
Our authority or?
Well, uh, there were public comments such as regards to taxation. Uh, and in citing regulations, we can't necessarily include elements of.
You mentioned wildlife corridors.
Wildlife corridors, we can't set those. Those are set by different jurisdictions like wild, uh, Wyoming game and fish and so forth. And so we, that language is already in the regulations. And so we just updated it to say, uh, to check what those recommendations are currently from those uh governing bodies that have jurisdiction.
So the Albany County regulations will require them to meet game and fish regulations?
Yes, and that is seen on page five dash twenty. Five dash twenty seven.
And then I, yeah, I think I might have flagged that as as I went along. Yeah, so. Just as a general notion, what what did you feel were the concerns that maybe got through that? What?
Sure.
What? Uh, the rail tie was a kind of a traumatic experience for a lot of folks, so so what what?
And thank you for making me relive it. And carry number one. Uh, largely the comments that were able to be addressed had to do with setbacks and such. Uh, there was concerns about inoperative wind turbines, and so we updated language about that. Formerly, the regulations had it that companies had to um. Create inventory of inoperative turbines uh once a year. Uh, and let the county know, and we updated that to be ninety days so that it would increase. The likelihood that there won't just be inoperative wind turbines and increase accountability with those company. And uh, we increased setbacks. Let's see, there, I can go through this, but um, from one quarter mile to one half mile from. Residential. Home. Thomas House. And.
Ever since we weighed in.
Uh, you know, I can just go through. I I do have itemized.
Yeah, I I I have a few comments. Yeah, please, and these will come back to us for a more thorough review beyond perhaps what you did, so. Um. I mean, well, listen, let's go ahead. Tell us what you've changed.
Sure, uh, from going through this document, and I do apologize, of course, because it has been almost a year since I did this, but. Um, so, uh, and I'm going through the notation uh from the document itself, not really using your agenda. That's it, so. Uh, five dash seventeen, uh, we updated to increase the size of wind turbine, a minimum of. One point five megawatts versus five hundred kilowatts, and that was mainly done due to the realities of the increase in wind turbine potential. Over the. In the receiving decades since this was last updated, and so it's. You're never going to see five hundred kilowatt industrial steam turbine these days, the minimum is one. Almost always, so that was just kind of almost a grammatical change to reflect realities.
But but why wouldn't the. Why wouldn't the lower threshold? Inoper.
Uh.
So I'm escaping the net this way that shouldn't.
It's. It's just not, it's outside, it's this not gonna happen. It was kind of, there's not really turbines that are installed industrial size. Wind farms don't use them that small. Uh, it's almost considered small in the debt. The threshold. Not quite, but. Yeah.
Good, and everybody else kept in here if you've got questions to go on. Yeah, they just struck me as as it. And when you explain it, it would make no difference.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, if you prefer to keep it at the lower threshold, yeah, exactly, we probably would not leave.
Just to understand.
Yes, of course. Uh, five dash eighteen. Uh, oh, uh, we updated the language to include solar facilities because these are regulations for wind as well as solar. Solar was not included in the language for this, so grammatical. More or less, uh, five dash twenty. Let's see. Okay, so in this case, this had to do with uh. The feedback from the county regards to rail tie. We have notice of proposed installations. Uh, we changed it to twenty miles for incorporated municipalities. Um, because we are in such a unique place in Albany County that we cannot unfortunately remember what was originally said. But we wanted to ensure that. The incorporated municipalities were there and could be notified, uh, increased it to twenty miles.
So so like this twenty miles reach for bler me to the far ends of Albany County, I think, God.
No, it does not, but there are incorporated municipalities within that. Uh. What are all the span? So it's not necessarily laramie to the county. Municipalities within twenty miles if you were to go to different parts of the county. Is that?
Like Rock River.
Yeah, Rock River or. Yeah.
So laramie was not, but not included. If it was more than twenty miles from laramie.
Exactly, right, right.
I understand where it did.
Yeah, okay. All right. Uh. Oh, uh, also on five dash twenty, um, publications. So we changed it to newspapers with the largest circulation. Just. To give that leeway, uh, it's. Because there's not the changing times of how media is established, but also added that county website had to also. Had publication as well, because that was absolutely. And then also on five dash twenty one included notice for county website. Proposals.
I get it. I have a questionnaire. Maybe it's.
Yeah.
Mister Berg, feel free to dive in on all of this. Um, when I read local newspaper with largest circulation. Uh, that flags. Is that is that known? And what does smugger circulation mean in the digital age anyway? So I'm I'm thinking that may not be a very well bounded requirement. But when when we say local newspaper with the largest circulation, the largest physical circulation, the largest print circulation, there's lots of newspapers, but probably would have been. Yeah, I mean, I mean. Well, I I just don't want. Is that what it should have been, should have, or what? Uh, the statutes. No circulation. Yeah, it's a newspaper of general circulation and mechanic, um, and that's. Uh, that's the uniform kind of step phase of why you go to the rat the line statutes.
All right. And this was a conversation that we had within our subcommittee about this because we weren't sure. Would it be the boomerang, or would something like laramie live, some of the other online ventures, and so that you're right. Specifics of that we did not necessarily lay out.
So what statute says newspaper. And. I mean, I don't, I have specifics, but I mean, pretty much guaranteed statutes are in motion, correct? Okay. So you're you're you you guys interested in this, just making sure it was.
See.
It was the big one. Okay, I guess we'll come back to that, whether we want to adopt that exact language or not, but. I mean, County State Daily is one that comes to my mind. They have been making big inroads. They're just in the last year.
That's that's true, and so we weren't sure if it had to be a local newspaper and just for the city, or if it's something that would encompass the state as well.
Uh, kind of what it is, it's a new sensible player. And it's focused on the cats, because of the of general circulation. All right, we will, we'll come back to that and probably look at Mister Harris for guidance, but. What that needs to say when we actually do our amendments. Uh, but yeah, it's interesting. This whole age was digital and and of course, uh, counties across the state have been pushing back against. Being required to put things in print media at some expense, and at some point, I thought we have to resolve. Okay, uh, you're picking up my comments as we go. Uh, others, again, dive in. Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so playing off the last one, I really enjoy this one. Uh, five dash twenty two. Uh, we added, uh, so findings for necessary approval. Uh, there's some language in there about in a statistically meaningful way. Right, so this is a discussion that we've had quite a bit. Uh, we wanted to add that so to created a meaningful threshold without establishing what that threshold should be. For some sort of. Let's see. Complaint or having a state. Get back to natural language and. Yeah, so the adverse effects, public health, safety, and welfare of the community, there was a large discussion within us. About what is considered adverse effects and who establishes what that is. Uh, we were afraid if. Certain people were in positions of power, they would say that there are adverse effects without having the ability to. Have a threshold to show that it did have a large impact. So it's it's a tricky one. It's just something that was brought up, especially considering um public comments about rail tie.
So I think I guess we would take all of these is that these are E A C recommendations to the county.
Yes.
As we perceive the benefits. Uh, have you guys looked at these? We got much.
Um, I will read it. I mean, I didn't give a lot of thought to him. I'm just saying the presentation direction that he wants to do, but. Yeah.
We'll we'll be looking for some reaction from you on. Yeah, that's a point. Go ahead. Well, I respect. Um, yeah, so I did have one question on the statistically meaningful way.
Yes.
Uh. I mean, I think I I understand. Um. The goal of that language. And um. But that would be, I mean. That almost muddies the water more than just than making. A singular determination. So I mean, were there any sorts of like standards that the A C kind of thought of? Or statistical kind of guidelines?
Uh, yes, uh, there were ones, but ultimately, uh. None could be agreed upon, so this would be the. Uh, undesirable, perhaps. What I want is to compromise with the language. Yeah.
Yeah, I think. That would uh definitely need more. I mean, I guess some sort of standards as to.
Right.
Yeah, that means for it to be a word.
We had. Obviously, we're open to leaving it, but thought it should be something that might need some sort of addressing, uh, but the realities of the statute might be that it cannot. Say.
Well, yeah, I didn't, um. Yeah, under, I guess, the the statutes which address um. Uh, wind and and solar energy permitting by the county. Um. Obviously, the county can go more restrictive than the standards of state statute, just to. Remind everyone. Yeah, again, I guess what I what I'm understanding we're doing here tonight is trying to milk you for whatever it's what you could provide. Of course, what what great thinking would it buy? Isn't it?
Yeah.
And then, of course, we'll have to. Make sure they pass muster.
Were there various statistical models that you discussed that you would name and throw out right now?
I would not be able to, given that this was discussed over a year ago, and the person reading it was the member that now lives in a different state.
Gotcha.
So. Said that I drove this short straw. That could.
Did y'all buy for Janice? Take a look at what all the counties were doing.
In regards to this particular one, I do not recall if this was something that came up when looking at other counties. Uh, primarily, it's looking at other ordinances in other counties. We've looked at setbacks.
Um. I just have a question on that same page, and it's something we addressed with the uh. Zoning regulations on economic and social impacts. Uh, I wondered if you guys didn't discuss that at all, perhaps.
Can you say where?
Okay, so I'm just just below your statistically meaningful way.
Okay.
Or per end of the applicant is actively just following the facts, economic and social impacts. Um, has addressed any complaints. That was something that we.
We chewed on.
Do you guys think about that at all? Again, if the answer is no, then we we can come back to it, but it.
I I do not recall at the moment, I can say for saying.
Okay, I'm good to go. Yes. It's.
Uh. Uh, five dash twenty three. Uh, we put in language for limitations on who constitutes an off-site property owner. Uh, who would have, you know, standing to logic and claim. Whether.
And and absent that language, it was. Anybody?
There was anybody.
And 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 why these parameters?
Uh, largely due to uh public comments due to rail tie as well as those who. Performing. Opposition to certain areas.
So your group's assessment was that if we captured folks within a half a mile, that would be.
For that.
Or light, glare, beep, noise federation. Okay, thank you.
Uh, five dash twenty four, added fourteen day notice before meetings requirement to ensure timely notice before hearings where there was no. Element there beforehand or number of days before. To give. Application to.
An issue that came up with rail tie was uh. Fire prevention. Did you guys discuss that at all? Uh, there was talk of. I I made the motion that it was defeated to amend the frequent to to require in nacelle fire suppression equipment. Uh, which is not part of the regs, but it can come up in rail tie. Did you guys discuss the fire situation at all?
Uh, we did not, actually. I do not recall discussions of fire. Suppression.
I like this line about help the project blend with the natural visual character of the area. Six better photo wind towers. That's gonna be a try to trick. Anyway, just on the side, okay, other comments, questions?
Well, I do have a question regarding that.
Yes.
I I can't help but wonder about whether there's any innovative thing going on out there to protect birds. Like uh painting the turbines in in any, I don't know, infrared, uh, anything that would catch a bird's eye and raise their attention into something whirling in front of them. Uh, are you aware of any um technology being looked at that way that might be in conflict then with this color requirement?
So as far as bird. Birds, all I am aware of are certain audio elements and different flashing. I don't entirely know. I can't say for certain. Um. I will say from my own experience, and we will, and James from the past, a plate glass window will kill more birds per year than a turbine does. So it's not necessarily something that we would want to. Put into. Uh, the regulation to do to that. I mean, it's not necessarily something, but. Uh. We could look into that more for sure.
Yeah, I I guess I'm specifically wondering, I know we would talk about the the various ways birds reach their demise. It really, I guess, I'm focusing in on just the rapid population and and how they're uh. Probably. Uh, gonna hit a turbine more than a plate glass, possibly, um, considering their range. But so so I guess that's that's just in the back of my mind. This power, how could if somebody. Like Cornell Ornithology Lab, for example, if they hit on something who bad. Um, uh, didn't he then, but if they if they come upon a a great solution, um, you know. How could we be ready to incorporate that into? The the wax regulations and how could you be ready to retroactively go back to existing wind farms and ask them to upgrade. Uh, to accommodate uh uh a change. So I I don't expect you to answer that, right?
No, that's interesting. So are you saying that uh these regulations would not grandfather in uh existing turbines? Or one year replaced those new turbines have to?
I guess I bought, I've just been wondering what what could be done, you know, do you grant a permit for five years and then the county can come back and. And we grant the permit and ask for, uh, say, there's great technology on fire suppression, say, there's great technology on. On rapid protection, you know, what what would allow the county to reopen and ask a a wax to update their their facility to match. Uh, new new technology.
That's an interesting question. That's an interesting question.
And I I don't know, there may be useful limitations to me. Once you grant the permit, it's out the door, you don't get another bite at it after five years, you know, so I might just be. Uh, type through kind of thing.
But but that would be one that we will we will come back to as regulations, if you guys did. Explore that at all.
Uh, to the extent of that, uh, no. I do not recall exploring that as much, um. Given that when we were looking at this, there wasn't any great technological breakthrough in regards to that assumption. That may have changed in the preceding year.
And we go back to general businesses.
Uh, which which one?
General business, that was all.
Oh, uh, five.
Five, that's been great.
Yes.
Why is there a a distance being imposed here? At all? I mean, what I I I'm curious, like, what happens for residents who are closer? Than these these guidelines here?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, it says minimize light, for instance. If you're at least at least a half mile or greater. And what about residents who are closer than that?
At least, no.
Okay, but that, yeah, this this.
So it's it's within that.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be. Yeah.
Well, then why does it say at least rather than within? Uh. If it's the other.
Which?
No, I think it was. I mean, this this sounds like if you're outside a half mile of the fly, then you're within a half mile doesn't apply the way I read it. I think the intention was, you know, after when certain lengthens. Well, I I we're getting to the tension now, but I'm on my line, the language there. Yeah. Agreed, but it's inch. Right now, if you're outside a half mile, it sounds like you're protected. If you're within a half mile or not, it'll be the way around like. I think I think you're correct enough, just with with which written, but but let's, we'll get back to the words. Okay, but I'm trying to figure out what was that.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think it's grammatical in that sense and uh. We can, we can.
So you're talking about the stuff that's closed that way?
Correct, correct, yeah, it was meant to prioritize those.
I was thinking, wow, I'm gonna do, I'm worried about you, but in Texas.
Right, right, right.
If you're more than half mile away, you're you're out of luck. Yeah.
Then I think I think uh the language got confused a bit because we also took into consideration the uh distance of, uh, what is it? Five and a half times the tower height?
Yeah, fine, that's fine. I still wouldn't understand what the intent is, not understand, so, yeah, we'll do that. Sure, just please. Uh, to the EAC. I guess, how did it arrive at at point five miles? Um. Was that, I guess, protective or not?
Yeah, it was a discussion where we felt. It was. Within. Reasonable uh distance. Uh, a lot of it had to do with. Again, all of this came under the element of rail tie feedback, and a lot of people having opinions that were outside. Of that. Half mile, and so trying to influence. It's trying to balance property rights with also uh other people without that. So it's it was very, it was a hard element to balance.
Sure. Um, so this, that terminology and language is is exactly what is in here for, um, with the change is made to move on the setback requirement for. Um, residential building laws for churches, so they just married that language with. The language um for the reasons, so, and honestly, this is some some of the setback requirements that. The difference of it is to eliminate the nuisances, but they did move that on the use.
From from what I'm looking at, I mean, it's exactly the same, so. I wanted to.
Yeah, if if I may, Mr. Gersh is absolutely absolutely correct, and I should have uh. Emphasized that there is some of these changes done to be consistent within the language. Uh, and that is absolutely the case, where we have one half mile for other elements and had been committed to.
I mean, the. The wind towers are a different kind of development, and their their reach. Is excessive. Particularly visually. Both in the. Tower itself and under the lights that typically accompany towers, so I think we'll want to think about half mile, whether it is the appropriate.
Well, so this is based upon uh papers published in Energy Policy, done on case studies where it was found that within seven hundred to eight hundred meters, it was reduced a lot of these nuisances. Uh, once you increase it to a thousand meters, it reduces it even more, but it was trying to uh maintain. Uh. Some closeness to it, uh, because once you get to a thousand meters, you're at point six miles, and then it's just also, we don't want three meters in there, this is America. So it so it does have uh some basis in studies done in energy policy in regards to uh nuisance elements.
That that's very useful information to take. Very nice. Yeah.
Uh, let's see, uh, five dash twenty-four at the bottom, uh, we increased. Or sorry, we included language that permissions transferred with property sale. So. Five dash one five, okay, so this is where setbacks are increased from one quarter mile to one half mile. Uh, and this is due largely to those studies as well, to try to balance different elements.
Oh, and point me to that, I guess I read that.
Uh, five, so five dash twenty-five, number seven, sorry, I'm looking at my.
Looking at seven A, and it looked to me like it had said one mile before you added half.
No, it was one quarter, and we added, we changed to the half, and we deleted the point two, so it just became five, as opposed to two.
Uh, uh, another offsite issue that had. Been discussed in real time is flicker. Did you guys talk about flicker at all?
Uh, flicker in relation to the lights.
In terms of the cutting of the sunshine by the blade.
Uh, in what regards do you mean? Uh, to to.
There are there are those who object to the fact that the tower. Between them and the sun is creating a stroke effect coming in their kitchen window, uh, as the blades.
We we did not consider that, no.
And there are standards for flicker that the industry has put forward that the guys at Railtie adopted.
Yeah.
But you didn't.
We we didn't, uh. We didn't, when we put this out for comment, we did not receive anything about flickers and. Uh, that did not interfere with me. And. Uh, uh, and, you know, continuing on five dash twenty-five at the bottom, we uh changed that to half mile to maintain consistency. And as you're going through, you can see changes are marked by the. Vertical line on the left. Side of the page, so. Um, let's see. Five dash twenty-six, it was just grammatical, we changed no to no, so. Oh, yeah. Not a huge. Uh.
Quick question.
Yes.
Tower height. Plane, what's what do we have, what's the terminology to use? The the total height of the system is gonna be the blade. Radius on top of the tower height?
Yeah.
Okay, but we we address most things as tower height is the term.
Correct.
Just the understanding.
With the understanding, yeah. That's a, that's a very good thing. Uh. Five dash twenty-seven at the bottom, okay, so obviously, one thing we're concerned about is with any of these large product projects, there is going to be a lot of impact on the infrastructure for installation and maintenance. And so this adds language to um. Try to make sure that uh. Africans are reaching out to all jurisdictions that are going to be affected by this heavier traffic. Uh, and a lot of wear and tear on the roads to make sure that there is approval. Before. If they do not receive approval, then they have to secure other routes to the sites.
On roads that fall within some.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, so uh impacted just depends. Thanks, and then the next. Uh, change is on five dash twenty-nine, H Operations. Uh. Oh, okay, so this is what I talked about earlier, um, we changed inoperative installations from twelve months to ninety days, so they have to give notice. Uh. Or do some things, some sort of plan of remedy for any type of turbine that is an operative for ninety days or more. Uh. So it either must be uh. Fixed, or it must be removed.
That seems quite severe. What was your discussion there?
Uh, it was. Previously, that it was one year, and there had been concerns about a lot of inoperative. Uh, wind turbines just being left.
What was the concern there?
Uh, because. It was not uh producing energy and it was considered by some commentators as blight in the landscape. So it's trying to. If. Increase accountability to.
You heard that.
What's that?
You heard that?
Am I allowed to say what I? Um. I think one year might be a a little long. I think ninety days might be a little short personally. Uh, I think maybe somewhere in the middle might be a little.
Do you have any knowledge about? Why industry does sometimes leave? For buying unprepared?
I do not.
I mean, it seems like they have one repair. I mean, because that's a whole question that's. In a turn, I don't, first place, carried running.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, I'm just wondering if it's actually needed.
So in this case, uh, this was member Wendell, who is dealt with these types of elements for these reclamation work a lot in different companies and dealing with them. Uh, that they will not reclaim the land as quickly as. Some might desire until there's. Uh, punitive elements involved, and so uh this was an element that he had pushed in discussions. So I cannot say necessarily if that is based upon ordinances elsewhere. But as of right now, that is.
Get my, I can come up with same situation, Platts, I wonder.
Yes.
If was there any research done on what is a normal? Idle period, I mean, someone of these things blows up, does it take six months to get it repaired?
That's a great question, um. Again, uh, we we need solicited feedback. Uh, and as I'm sure you're aware, being on a committee, that this is always readily readily available when you want it. Uh, so we did reach out to uh industry groups such as WEA, American Water Association, uh, and other elements, uh, we did not get feedback. Necessarily, so we had to go with. What we could.
I think some kind of trigger is appropriate, and and you're just asking for a plan, they don't have to have a fix. Um, having visited a state beach in Hawaii that had a completely inoperative wind farm just sitting there rotting, uh, coroing. Um, you know, it it looked like it was, and this was. Fifteen years ago, so I'm I'm just guessing that. Some lessons to learn the hard way, that if you don't have a reclamation plan, then you're left with a bunch of windmills just sitting there on the landscape. Um, so I I do think that it's. Reasonable to have a a trigger, maybe ninety days is too short, um, but really, you're just. This is just asking for a written plan and schedule. Maybe it's, we got supply chain problems and we can't fix it for a year, um, but I I do think that the county doesn't want to have. Uh, then unintended flight of towers just just sitting there.
And if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, after that, uh, the other. Change on five dash twenty-nine has to do with uh an inventory. That the company has to do, uh. The news changed to ninety days to be in line with that, so the quarterly. So there is an inventory of operational in operation. And that there is. A plan in place to ensure that they're not just left.
Okay.
Uh, and then. Finally, uh, number sixteen of our changes, uh, five dash thirty, uh, C. Uh, we took out if required about the FAA approved lighting ads in the area. So it's just mostly grammatical to be more in line with. The elements.
So this is another one that that was discussed, something like the real time, um. And as I remember the discussion. One had to. The the, the idea was the county could not require the uh radar. Activated lights. If FAA thought they were appropriate. Would you get, and and an alternative to that would be, we don't want to see lights flickering all night long. And if you can't get FAA to approve it, then you don't get your permit, would be another approach to that. And did did you guys discuss the relationship between county regulations and FAA approvals?
Uh, so it was our understanding that it was required and that these are radar. Any tower that would go up, required by FAA would have these. Radar triggered lights, so they would only go on when there is a plane in the area, and that is standard as far as we understood. Again, I'm trying to go from a year ago.
Rail tie, as you say, with perhaps some some trauma. But it it my repile, direct action time was, there was concern that. That FAA would would say, we want constant lights.
Oh, oh.
And big questions whether the. County could then say, well. We don't.
Hmm.
And so couldn't require the lights on, or we couldn't require them to have radar de-activated lights, but we couldn't deny the permit.
I I I understand what you're asking now, I'll a little better apologize. Uh, so in that regard, no, we did not. Uh, think about if FAA regulations and county regulations differed.
Okay. You you, it sounds like you agreed, though, that the lights were objectionable impact.
Uh, we agreed that there was a lot of concern about lights. And so we wanted to uh ensure that um the radar enabled lights would go on. Regulations.
Okay, thank you. Around at the end of your.
That's the end of our change.
Hey, let me ask a question then of you guys, what what is, what is the process going for? This is unusual that. EAC has been tasked with developing regulations that ultimately will have the law permission. So are we continuing to work with the AC going forward? What what's where where are we?
Well, so the AC has done their work, um.
Okay.
I believe they were tasked by the commissioners to to look at the regulations and to provide recommendations, so. They're providing the recommendations to you today, um, now. I mean, it's up to you what you want to do going forward. You can say, okay, yeah, let's let's work with these and maybe use something with them, or, okay, thanks, um. Have a good day. You know, um, I think there is some interest from at least one of the board again for the shoes to, um, you know. Take over the bed more time than these, and that's why you have them, you know, go get. Would have a decent move with this, so. Um, if you would like to go forward, if you'd like to make some more changes, um, I know Matt probably might have something he wants to look at, or there there are some things that I would like to to look at as well. Um, just some things that have came up that, you know, might be good to, you know, throw in there, um, so, but ultimately, it's up to you, um. You know, I I would say look at the workload, what we're doing right now, and you get some other projects done, and then have these, but, um, we can do what I really like. I mean, honestly, I don't think you'll be a huge let us do change in here, um, just to to bring it up to. Standards and, um, you know, considerably serious, I wish, as well. But, again. It it is, it is totally your call, your 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 board, this board has been tasked with, um, requiring supervisor recommendations to several more county commissioners, and what issues?
What's the the nature of those discussions? Are the county commissioners anxious for us to take up with regulations and modifications or? Well, their priorities?
I mean, they felt like, um, the AC have expertise on there that might, you know, bring something to the table to look at. Um, honestly, I mean, from their review, there wasn't a lot of huge shame that they came up with. Um, I I feel like they validated what we have, you know, I mean, that's what's been decided like, they look pretty good, but there are things you might want to look at, you know? So I don't think there's anything comparative. Now, I can't speak for the the board of county commissioner, but I don't. Know their opinions. Um, I know that they were, they passed ways to look at this, but, um, I don't know. I mean, that might be a question I can I can take back to them and say, hey, we received some some recommendations from the AC, you know? This is something that they're interested in, um, we can do that, I mean. Whatever it was.
Well, I I mean, my sense of the commission just we're not prepared to simply adopt all of these. As written.
I agree.
Um, so.
Right.
What the next thing that would happen is we could just take them on us and have other things. But but before we let you go, you you had said in your presentation at one point, we could look into that, or is your sense that your colleagues are remain interested in? Working on this, or where where's the AC if that's it?
I'm sure if you wanted to, uh. Send it back to the AC with revisions and questions, uh, we could would try to bring to the committee and inform it. Right now, similar to you and other committees and Casper Aquabur is largely a big part of what we're focused on, but, um. It's it's up to you. We we serve at. The pleasure of the different committees in the county to help out.
Some of the individuals, though, that brought it to you. Have indicated are no longer part of the AC, is that?
Uh, two, two, there was three of us on the subcommittee, two of the three of us are still on the sub, are still on the committee. So, yeah. I'd be happy to talk with. Ms. Bedwell. And we can bring it up at the next year's meeting, if you like.
Okay. Yes, a couple more questions about the research that you did and whether. Did you find other counties coming up with, um, like overlay zones? To say? If we're gonna have wind, we want it here, we don't want it here, uh, like. Right now, the wind projects come in based on. Uh, from what I can tell, the energy companies try to find the least number of property owners to work with and to. And to hope that none of it is on federal land. Um, to reduce their. Is that how the county wants to operate, or do we, would we prefer to have overlays zones where we say? Look, we got world-class wind and and we should be able to say where where we don't want it. Did you see any examples of of that kind of, uh? County, um, overlay zone approach?
If I am going from my recollection, I do not recall any such counties with nineteen overlay zones. By and large, most counties seem to want to. Open up the possibility of wind farms. The from those. But. That is something if you wanted us to look into.
And then the second question, just about light, light blinking, um, is there any kind of? Preference or ability to control the lights off blinking in reason? Uh, like, is that something that comes up? You know, I I can look across at the. I think it's Rock Creek and they're they're, it's like they're. Going at different intervals and then like there's a couple random towers that are just doing their own thing. And I thought, you know, I'm at a healthy distance, it doesn't bother me, but if I were closer, it might really bother me that there wasn't just like some moment of dark. True, good points. Is there a way to synchronize them? Or require sa- synchronize one?
I cannot speak to that, uh, but it is something to look into.
Yes, that's all.
So where are? Okay, this is this is a great just kind of introduction and remind us of all these issues, uh, a lot of work here, uh, surprised that you're adding. Wave the cumulative impact flag.
Well, that's on my.
It should be.
Well, or even just like, let's say, require, um. These supplemental environmental projects that offset bird kills. Are those being located out of our county? Are they? Being selected because of an energy company is gonna have to upgrade their lines somewhere anyway, you're getting double credit for. I don't, I don't know. That's that's a whole separate issue.
So, I mean, I like what the George offered that that, and it sounds like you guys would agree that. You didn't find big holes that needed plugged.
Uh, uh, I'd like to think that's the big takeaway. Our recommendations is that ultimately, when we looked at the comments and what we were charged with and what we were looking at. What was written was fairly comprehensive in a way that I think a lot of the public may not have realized or read.
No, I I I think that that's significant to our prioritization of how we do, how we move forward. So, uh, I would ask my colleagues, what what's, what's your sense of? Their urgency in us moving forward with this, we will take it up at some point, obviously, uh, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I. I would bring it along. So the cat and the, and we have course. Uh, we could always reorder things should some wind project come for us in the future, in the near future. Now, and in the county mission, we could ask who, uh, she's under today, she's on the A line. See how they feel about what urgency they kind of did to them.
And that's what the church basically offered to. And they have to act everywhere.
They have the same stuff on their plates as.
Oh, yeah.
So so. Does this need to be in place before another application turns up? You can't wait for an application and then change it, so. Could we then start with having staff go through and find their, if they're willing, maybe have time to do this? The things that they're concerned about and. Because it needs to be prepared before an application shows up.
Well, that that there's, the question is, do we feel that this needs to be done on some? Accelerated timeline in anticipation of another application? Do we have any intelligence on that? On other applications floating around out there?
I haven't had any phone calls or meetings or anything like that, anything pending. Um, my communications have been on on those who've already figured this out. Um, and usually I, they'll let you know like a year in advance before they're applying, so. Uh, I mean, typically, I mean, because these are big projects, a lot of moving parts, a lot of things are some kind of developments, they gotta do that. Um, so I. I I'd be pretty confident saying we'll see in the next year, so.
But but they would apply under these records?
Yeah, they would.
Yes, please. Well, they they would, but if the regulations were to be changed. Uh, and what fully, you know, go through by inside and commissioners, play it out before they actually turn in that application. Then they're they're back here, we're advised for them. Actually, realistically, isn't it? We've now gone through several regulation changes. We're not going to put new wind regs in place in less than a year.
Yeah. I think we did work on that, but. If somebody said, get on it, we've given all the answers, agree. Six months.
I mean, what we discovered with the cap, if everyone's kind of shocked was, no. Start counting to statues already coming, periods that they stack up in a real.
I mean, we we can't, we do anything in less than seventy-five days.
Right, and and I'm not saying that, like, if we just presented something to you and everybody's good with it, yeah. You do it pretty good. I mean, there's like significant discussions and, you know, we really wanted to. In a, in a sense, it's a major changes, who knows? I mean, I, it's trying to really put a time and a date that I probably do this. But like, just to do a regular for a change, I think. You know, if everything is pretty straightforward.
Nice, thank you. Other thoughts?
Well, so why is there so much turmoil over real time? Because things aren't clear or? We don't want that to happen again.
Good question. What what's, what was all the fuss over real time?
Yeah, location, um, it's there's there's a lot of people that have second homes down there, live down there. Yeah. Lot of, there's, there's some folks with some indicate amount of money down there as well, and they've got their interests on in their properties. Yeah.
So the problem wasn't that the regulations were unclear. Or reasonable, it was just that they didn't like.
They they didn't want them, they didn't want to see them, you know, it it's, for the most part, I would say. Ninety-nine percent of the people just don't want to see them, you know, they bring up all those other reasons, but it's. To get down to it, they just don't want them, they don't want to skip there. Because it's. I mean, and you will see them there. There used to be like two, three hundred feet tall, four, five hundred feet tall, but these things are six hundred percent, they're giants. And then they have the blinking lights at night, you know, it's like. You cannot not see these things, you know? I mean, we send out notice five miles from these projects. And you can still be part of them away than that, you know?
Oh, yeah, right, like.
But it's, I mean, we hope there's some who actually likes.
So I guess so, working on a date is not going to avoid all that.
It depends where it's cited, because then we had the Rock Creek won't come through and. There was not even near the level of of interest from the public.
Right, it would have made this one better than than that one. Well, yeah, I think it's, you could say the regs aren't the problem, I suppose. Right, there's those who would like the regs to be much more severe in terms of lighting and location and. Bird take a whole lot of things, but it wasn't confusion about the regulations. There are those who would like the regulations, who would forbid.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's kind of why.
Uh, in the playoff of that, uh. It was clear from all of the comment that they had, there was nothing wrong with regulations, everything that the comments about was clear in the regulation. And so it definitely was. An element of it didn't matter.
Yeah, although, um, you know, based off of my experience with. Uh, appeals all the way to the Supreme Court on real time, there's certainly room for improvement in the regulations. I think we already made kind of one of the, one of the bigger fixes, but. Yeah, it could always be improved. Well, my my sense is it's, this is a pretty heavy lift and we ought to, we do have it right. And that's going to take some time. And that would mean we take it up. In due course, which is not immediately, uh. It's that. Yeah, let's let's see and let's get some feedback from the county commissioner. Let's see if they feel differently, but they have the same daunting workload that we do. Thank you very much for bringing this back into our heads. It never hurts to have those things rattle around and and it's not going away. I mean, that's the, we that, we know that for debt share and and Wyoming in general and all the county specifically continues to be rated very highly quality and swift energy, so. We are, we are not done with this, but. Other questions on that issue, comments? Thank you very much for for trying to resurrect your thoughts on that. I appreciate the hard work of the AC. Just, I have just a couple of notes that I think I saw that probably go towards towards staff and we'll come back to this, but. When we do. We could, could we review any additions before applied for those? Because we've now granted probably six of these. About a count of, uh, with these large industrial, but, pardon me.
But yeah, I mean. Yeah, six, seven.
Yeah, okay, so. We have a a pretty good track record of what has been at issue with whether. Conditions have been required and the question, should those conditions be written to the department, just to make life easy for everybody? And then, of course, we'll need some coordination, but it's definitely a site, there's a number of references and the interesting regulations. So the kind of thing that the sherries has done a good job for us, what what? What can we do? Uh, what can we do, and that is coordinate with the, uh, the site. And then at some point. The state needs to get its arm drawn to the effects, I completely agree with you, and there. And then maybe the answer is we. We have wall-to-wall wind, wind farms, five blocks, seven. But that's something that's going to have to be dealt with. All right, that's. And my my thoughts on the subject, right? Let's move on then, and and the rest of our agenda, I think, are mostly in the update department. Uh, an eleven cap update, uh, I I can probably start that and you guys go ahead. Uh, I was just gonna say, uh, as, two of us were on this subcommittee, dedicated to subcommittee that was, uh, put together jointly by. Plant, the city planning, uh, county planning and zoning and garden advisor committee. And we met several times, of course, in December and produced a document at the end of December with our recommendations. Uh, for Stan Tech. Uh, moving forward. And that's where this body, through its subcommittee, has, we're waiting for a revised version five, uh. Ten minutes scheduled for the end of March. At which point, we move back in our court to proceed, uh, also significantly over the course of discussions the last. Say, two months, the regulations have been quite distinctly separated from the cap. Uh, I know this group has talked about keeping those in parallel, and there certainly merit to keeping track of both as we go forward, which is something, something that is trying to coordinate on. But. We as planning and zoning, next step will be to take up, once the cap is is completed, uh, we have. Send it on to the board of county commissioners, our next step will be to to dive into regulations on a word-by-word, page-by-page basis. Right, and add to that.
I don't have anything to add that way, um, but I did want to, I talked with, um. Darren Parkin and. We're trying to get a meeting together in February, um, so then the month Stan Tech should have all their stuff together and then. Um, I think the date that works for the city is the February twenty-third. What is, what is your availability is finding zoning commission?
And this would be, uh, the three commissions or what have you got in mind for that?
Um. I believe so. We're staff, we're actually going to meet here in a couple of weeks and get a little more detail, but we're just trying to get a placeholder. Uh, potentially for, yeah, the twenty-third is a Thursday, um. In February. Well, we'll probably, you know, bring, you know, snacks and things and we'll just, no, I'm just like, um, so. It'll probably be, um. I think we'll want a report from the subcommittee on the changes that they recommended, um, and then. We're wanting to start moving through the process, I mean, we'll get the boards together and see what they think, you know? Um, if they're okay with the documents, then, or, you know, the plan, then. Um, we could, we could potentially start the thirty days then or. Um, split out after that and then determine what we're doing, um. The, uh, the details are not super solid at this point, so.
But this. Well, before we agree meeting, I think we're all.
Right, well, the the original plan was for have this, have the some subcommittee. Right, well, the, the original plan was for have this, have the sub, subcommittee come up with their recommendations and then bring them back. And so that will be part of that meeting day, so that would be a purpose, um, the. Those, those recommendations have gone to Stan Tech just to be incorporated. Um, but then the boards have to like agree to those, or not, you know, I mean, they. Technically, you guys could kick them out if you didn't like what the subcommittee is, so. Um, but other than that, I guess that's where I'm unclear, so that would be one of the purposes, but that would be other than that, I mean. We want to start moving this forward, we want to start, you know, the public process, get it out there, um, get the hearing scheduled and those types of things. I guess, why don't I ask what your opinion is, what we, what should we, what would you like to see? And then I can take that to my counterpart.
Well, my notion of what we were doing, and I looked my code. Subcommittee member was. That. If Stan Tech were to make the adjustments that we were recommending, and we had discussed all of those in San Tech, and they were going to make them. Um, that the documents came back at the end of the month. Could be done.
Okay.
And it would not need to go back to the, the group of nineteen. It would simply fall on planning and zoning and city planning's plate to proceed on our respective timelines and.
So not have a, a meeting together again.
That was kind of weird.
I think, I think our hope was that this next version would be like in an approvable form. So we could start the clock ticking and just get it out in a regular meeting.
We as county planning and zoning.
Yeah, that, that we could certify it to the board of county commissioners.
Okay, um. Okay, I can take that to my counterpart, I have absolutely no problems with that. Um, however, where this has been a joint thing all the way through, I, I don't know if they'll be okay with that, so.
I think the sense of the committee, and, and, and E A C was a member of the committee, was that this was the end of the. The grand three commission, bringing all of their input forward and pointing their individual members to the subcommittee, and then this wasn't a, another step. This was the final step.
Okay, it, would it be fair to say, would it be okay for me to say that the planning zoning commission, um. Doesn't necessarily want to have the, a joint meeting on the twenty-third, and that. Once the, the, the plan comes back, they just wanna, you guys wanna act?
Well, let's see, we are ready to proceed, now, if, if the powers that be want us to sit down and hold hands with our colleagues at the.
Right.
E A C and the, the city planning, then of course, we can do that, but I think that's probably not consistent with either our colleagues at E A C or city planning.
Okay, yeah, I mean, from our meetings, I, I, you know, that E A C was kind of done at that point, once they, once we got through that, um. And, and I'm absolutely fine with that, I'm, yeah, I'm working with the city, and so that, that's, I'm just trying to bring back what. So I, yeah.
Well, and, and one of the frustrations of this whole thing has been where the city is, and we. Maybe I'm just thick-headed, but I continue to whip sod between get it done, get it done, get it done, and wait, let's get everybody all together here.
Right.
Well, we're out of the big game, I'm like.
Okay, okay, so what I'm hearing, and this is, what I'm hearing is, you're read, once this comes back. It should be in, in actionable form, and there's no need to meet again.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna take that to the city, my colleagues there, and we'll have a discussion, um, and then, if they don't wanna do that, I'll just say, too bad.
I think I'm available on the twenty-third.
Okay.
That's the thing that you're looking for.
Okay.
And, and that. The discussion with Stan Tech has been verbal. Mostly, so there is the possibility that they will come back, and we think you guys are crazy about getting to do that, and then there might be a discussion, but I. My sense of it, and having been the point person for the subcommittee with Stan Tech, is that. There's a very high probability that what we'll see the other January will be something that, that is, is done with respect to the three commissions.
So, sure, and in that case, we, we all proceed and start working on it, and get it done, I agree, we only need another two meetings.
So now, do, do you feel like the plan zone, or planning mission members felt the same way, that we were just going to take them separately, I mean. I guess I didn't get the vibes from that, but.
The media, that's why. E A C, which you probably agree with.
Well, I would say E A C, yeah, they're like, okay.
Thanks for inviting us.
I'm here. Coming up to this.
I think those are our vibes. I, I mean, personally, I don't wanna have no joint meeting where we're trying to decide something, we can decide that, and do so efficiently.
Well, and you have to decide it individually anyways, even if you're in the same room, you guys have to make. Yeah, your own motions and, and, and take action that way.
And we have decided. Perhaps in, in some tentative, just through our some efforts, and then, and, and our colleagues pointed and said, and herself, to carry our message forward, we did so. And, and feel like it's been received, so, yeah, I think that's.
Okay.
That's the pitch from here, and I'm looking at my colleagues, is that we're ready to be done.
Okay, I'll communicate, how about, okay, I'll communicate with the city, and then I'll, I'll communicate with the chairman, and then we'll figure out where we're going, and then. If something else comes up and we do need a meeting, then, uh. We'll, we'll figure that out, so.
Figure that out, and the. As far as the regulations, and I think there's been some progress made there, that, that there were those upstairs committee at one point who felt like we had identical regulations, so it's just gonna be just like that. But I think as we've moved it, but they have realized as well as we have, that, uh, for one, our authorities are quite different. And that we, each body needs to be responsive to that, and, and our interests, uh, are, are. Well, we hope our interests are well aligned, but the things that we have regulatory, for example, there are no semantics in the city, so that's a whole body of our regulations, so. So, yeah, there will be no need at all for a, a group development of regulations. While we will certainly take, make every effort to solicit comment from our colleagues and constituents, and take it seriously, and vice versa.
Right.
So that's.
Yes.
Regulation going forward.
I agree with that as well, yeah. This would be much streamlined than what. Yeah, much more streamlined, I think, if we, yeah, can just move more that way.
And, and, and there is some urgency, because we're, we're currently working under, uh, a moratorium, uh. The November twenty twenty-one regulations may be back in place as early as mid-February, uh, but even those will not include the boundary change that's, so. With respect to our earlier discussion of the, of the winter regulations, I think everyone thinks this is on the get it done track. Okay, does it comment on that? Growth area management plan while you're at the podium.
Yeah, so, um. We're, we should have a. I guess there's one last piece that they're kind of working on right now, um, they're working through some, um. They, as the, the consultant, the city, and the city are working through some comments from. City Works, what do you call it, Public Works, Public Works, um, they had some comments, um, they're working through those. Um, hopefully they get that all figured out, um, and then, um, we should get you a draft, hopefully with. Quite a bit of lead time to look at for that thirtieth meeting, um, that meeting will be a short presentation, um, and then. Um, basically get the group's determination how to move forward, if, if, if the plan looks good, um. Then we'll move forward, if it doesn't, then we'll do what we need to do, um, I will note that they're going to provide the plan, um, a proposed draft regulations. Um, and, um, the intergovernmental agreement, um, that being said, the latter two items, the, the. Um, regulations and the agreement, um, are not. We're not really going, it's not the intention to discuss those, it's the intention to get the plan through, just like we're doing the cap. Does that make sense? We'll have those for reference, however, we wanna work on the plan itself and get it through the process, so, um.
Sketch out the process for us again, th, th, this will then come to open hand planning and zoning commission as a zoning amendment. We will work and recommend to.
The, the regulations part?
Yeah.
Yes, uh-huh.
And, well, the plan as well, it's a document.
The plan is not a regulatory document.
But it would come to us.
Yeah, 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 yes, absolutely.
Certification.
Uh-huh, it'll, it'll go through the same things as the, the cap.
But as planning and zoning, okay, I'm, I'm sensitive to this. How is the cooperation of the city being managed with respect to the growth area management plan? Are we having joint meetings with city planning, what's the vision?
Um, they do envision having a joint meeting, that, the meeting will be scheduled on the thirtieth. Um, but I believe after that, they're okay with. There's not the emphasis on like doing everything together, I guess, on this plan or whatever, because I think, yeah. Do you have something, Joe? Oh, yeah, and after we have this plan, or after we have this meeting, um, they're planning on doing an open house in. February sometime, just to, um, have the complete draft out, so the public can look at it and provide any comments that they would like as well, so. Before it comes to you, and then obviously there'll be more comment opportunities, so.
Again, having been through this now with the cap, that's all. Uh, Logan Simpson's work in their public meetings.
Correct.
To take input.
Yeah.
The end of that, it comes to P M Z and we proceed.
Hmm.
Okay, yes, that's true. All right. Um, I just. Uh, in regards to the I G A and the, the growth area itself, um, I suppose. Back in late November, early December, uh, I did. Some, uh, somewhat extensive research on, I guess, the, the issue of requiring, um. That annexation agreement as a condition for our approval. Um, and it's problematic, uh, I have found no other jurisdiction, uh, nearby, uh, throughout the other states. Uh, that require such an agreement, um. I think it was at, in Boulder County in Colorado, there was mention of requiring in the draft, that never are of their growth area plan. Um, but that never made its way into regulation, um. And it, it just. I, I, I can feel the lawsuits coming on, um. And, and, and just, I guess, functionally, when you look at these. If we're requiring them to connect to public water and sewer as a condition of their subdivision, I mean, that accomplishes. That same thing, um, what the city then does. Uh, you know, to, to get that, um, connection is, is its prerogative, but. The annexation process, I, the county has absolutely no part. You know, um. We would, we would kind of be shown up to a game where two other teams are already playing. Uh, so. Yeah, um, I, I just, uh, felt that I needed to, um, state that, uh, before things get fun. When are these concerns being communicated to Logan Simpson? I mean, they, they should be grappling with these issues, yes? Um. Well, uh, to, I, I have not, um, I think December was a little crazy of a month for me, um. So I have. Has that been addressed by, by Logan Simpson?
Which one?
Uh, that, that we would require the applicant to have an annexation rule of the city.
Yeah, I mean, I know I've addressed it in a meeting, um. Where I said that that's not something that we're going to require, and the city agrees that that's not how this works, I mean, they have. Annexation agreements, but it's, it's always been in between them, and somebody else, the county's never been involved with that. Um, but yeah, we, I, I think exactly what you said, I conveyed to them, that, um, yeah, just requiring water and sewer, you know.
That.
That takes care of that, so. Um, and I would say that, you know what, there, I mean. This has been the most time-consuming part of this project, at least for me, because there's a lot of stuff going on with these regulations and, um. I think there will be, this is where it works, the plan's not so bad, but like, once we get to this stuff, that, there's gonna be lots of work. Um, to make it comprehen. Comprehensible, I guess, to understand what's going on, you know, I mean, it's, yeah, yeah, it's.
And then.
Right, yeah, and, and with this whole project, it's, it's. The heavy lift is on us, you know, this is all our regulations, we're gonna have to try to enforce this stuff, we're the ones that are gonna have, we'll be the ones on the front lines, you know? And so it's, yeah.
Which, I suppose, leads me further, um, I would implore, uh, each of you as, uh, commissioners to really think deeply about the I G A. Obviously, it's something we can do legally, but.
And, and it's something that was in the original scope of what they were supposed to provide us. Um, but, you know, whether we get it adopted or not, that's, that's different. It, it's hard, because again, the I G A is, the county should do all these things. And the only thing, there's only like one thing, you know, the city does, you know, so it's not like. We're basically allowing the city to tell the county. And what to do, and, and in, in a sense, some of this. I mean, the purpose is to make sure that we don't box in the county, right, we don't make it so they can't develop into the, into the county. Um, you know, annexing and, and, and do that, um, but we have to make sure it's reasonable too, and. And, and I feel like we've been working towards that, I don't think we've got there yet, but we're working towards that, um, so, I'm not like. It, there's just a lot here, this is, there's gonna be some, some intense discussions that we'll need to have, um, whether we wanna do the I G A, how we're gonna do the regulations. Um, yeah, whether it's even the word, I don't know, it's, it's been.
It's been fun, I guess what I'm concerned about, certainly we'll chip in here, is that, is, I mean. City and county hired Logan Simpson, and I was on that selection for the expertise that they could bring to it, and I, I guess, it's feeling to me like there might be a little disconnect here, that they aren't. Working closely with city and county staff to make sure that this plan and the I G A and the regulations are, are workable. Am I missing something? It just sounds like a lot of discussions should be taking place between, say, you two and Logan Simpson.
Yeah.
Before we ever see, or the public ever sees anything, so.
I mean, the, the, the amendments and things that I've sent, I mean, there, there's a lot that we've been making changes on, um, so, um, yeah. I, I need to look through the newest draft to see if everything that I suggested is in there, and. Um, so, yeah, and, and the attorney's got it as well, um, but Matt, I think we just got it a couple of weeks ago, or whatever, so, I mean. It'll, it'll take them looking through it too, to, to make sure.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's. That's my biggest concern is, is that requiring, um, an annexation agreement to be in place, uh, and then I, I guess. I, I would appreciate a little more of a feel, um, from this commission, um, before I did any sort of, uh, red line to the I G A. But, I mean, the regulations themselves are. They're nice.
Getting a commission, you wanna offer some feel, so, for now, we, we are waiting on plan, uh, it's hard to come out, I think, they're talking.
Right.
Comment on, so.
Yeah.
It's, it obviously is gonna be a huge, you know, it's gotta be a huge amount of.
Hmm.
No, there's no question about that.
And, and I think it's, this is just, we need to take one by the time, and the plan's the first spike, you know? Um, we make sure that looks right, we make sure that we're okay with what's kind of being proposed, and then we can take the next fight, you know? Um, cause once, once we get that kind of in place, then everything else. We work through and we, we eat that elephant, so.
That's having us, offering thought on, for, where are we going?
Well, not seeing the I G A, I don't know, I guess I, I don't know, but. I, I do feel like the county is being asked to do a lot of heavy lifting, and I guess I'd like to see the city put some steel. And I guess I'd like to see the city put some skin into the game on solving some of the problems that we had in. With running utilities out to areas with known groundwater contamination, you know, like. To me, that would show a good faith effort, um, all of us working together to mutually solve some problems. Um, so I, that's probably not in the mix, but I guess that's the kind of trade off I'd like to see is, um. Them stepping up to, to spend some of their money on, on utility, uh, extensions. To places with known groundwater contamination.
Yeah, I don't think that's an idea, but. Yeah. I know that those types of issues are, are kind of noted, but.
I mean, they're, they're leveraging a lot from us, and, and.
Right.
That would be a nice thing to leverage back.
Sure.
But maybe not realist.
Well, I don't know, I mean, my first thought, why do we need an intergovernmental agreement? But basically, city is coming to the county and saying, we would like you, county, to do these things. And, and I'm. Happy to embrace the full population of Albany County, that's, that's part of our constituents, so this isn't like. Like, Kobe Powell, who's fighting against those football teams, it's like, but what, this is big set and a little set, so we. The county and we, as the county, there's a keen interest in the city growing in a orderly and thoughtful, productive way. But it's something that reality, this makes a better process. You know, it's just that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, city's gonna grow into the county, and we do have to do sort of upfront funding, uh, it's just the nature of things. We, we want, we want the store, yeah. But. It has to pass to our muster, rather than just the cities, and I, and I like what Commissioner Hammond's saying, uh. That, that, uh. A subdivision comes before the city that's within the A D O Z. We, the county, would like the city to address it with the same care. That is reflected in their comments to us when we are contemplating their county subdivision. So, philosophically, but I think we're on the same page there. All right, well, let's see how it goes, but, but also it isn't, this isn't a big rush, this is something that's been in the works, and it's needed to be in the works for. Fifty years, so let's, let's do it right. Uh, and if the commissions can contribute to that at this point, let's do, but if. This needs to brighten at the staff level, let's do that.
Right, and that's, you know, that's one of the determinations we're trying to figure out, uh, is make sure we. We wanna have something that's, that's ready and ready to go to you before we even have a meeting on the thirtieth, so. We're, we're hopeful that happens, um, but if it doesn't, we'll let you know, so. Cause yeah, I, I know what you guys' feelings have been, our feelings, and we just don't want to have a meeting to have a meeting, so. Um, we want to, you know, we want to be productive and, um, to move the project forward and not just the, uh. Arresting spot or whatever you want to call it.
Well said, other comments on this topic? Okay, thank, thank you, is that?
That's it?
We exhausted this, but.
I think so.
Okay, it's, it's, we were not done by a long shot, um. Um, next item on the agenda was the bylaws, um, the fact that we didn't include anything in the packet suggests to me that nothing has happened.
Correct.
Staff level, um, as I was contemplating that, and I think we discussed a little bit last time. Uh, I think what it really needs. Is somebody to, to just. Offer a, a complete draft that we can start marking out, and instead of just using carbon counties.
I agree.
Uh.
Is there an electronic Word version of our current bylaws? That.
We've got an old scan.
Right, is there?
Yeah, we don't have a, a Word document.
Cause if, if there was a Word document, I'd be willing to take the first stab at. Because I guess the frustration I had with our previous discussion was that. We were just looking at carbon counting and it wasn't looking at what we already have, which isn't. A terrible, I mean, there's merit to what we have, and it could be improved on, but I'd rather be starting from. That document and adding to it than trying to. Take what's in that and flunk it into carbon counting, and I'm, I'm willing to take a stab at it, but I don't, do you have any staff that are able to? Print it into a Word document for starters, or?
We can try, yeah, I mean, Joe can type it out, right?
They are certainly before the ad, uh, work process.
So, yeah, and, and honestly, like. Our, our bylaws aren't that far off, they're not horrible, you know, I mean, I think they need to be updated, there's probably some things that. You know, most people keep having their bylaws that we don't right now, but, um. But yeah, no, we'll, we'll see if we can get that then.
Well, I, I, I may have heard the past, one of my OCR programs, that's all you're talking about, and. So, I can, I may have that, uh.
Oh, that you, you may have that in?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, uh, you, one can now take any PDF.
Yeah, our. As long as it's clean enough, but can our PDF thing read it? Yeah, cause we've, we've got a, a PDF program that does that too, I just see what comes out of it.
It'll be the OCR one, um.
Uh?
I don't have that.
You don't? Well, and it's really old too. Yeah.
Make you feel better.
Anyways.
Uh, what I did in preparation for the meeting was looked at just the, the table of contents of the Albany and Carman, and then it, it. Made a list of things that it should cover, but I'd be happy to work with you if you wanted to, because I think there are just some basic. There has to be an authority section, organization, allocating, or that, uh, but, but yeah, we're all in agreement that we're not. Have nothing in front of us to mark up at this point, that's what we do, and again, this is a high priority, but I'd be happy to. To share my thoughts with, with him, and it's just kind of a commissioner Kennedy.
Joe looks like he's excited to do that, so.
Try and take those little. You guys.
Awesome, thank you.
Two, twenty twenty three regular meeting times, we have grown accustomed to.
Well, independently, at, at our last meeting, Matt and I had a very successful, we also thought this is the way to go. Use our old bylaws and update them there, rather than going the other way around, and I was also willing to take a stab at. No, no, let me start, I'm happy. Feed your thoughts to them again. No, this is a popular plan.
It seems like it's not a very high cost scale time.
Somebody has to pick up their hair, and, but, yeah, all the power is all here, and that is, that is. Good, good to you, Mark.
Are we good with the same schedule? We, we'd be happy to go forward with that, so.
Okay, so we've been doing, uh, what, second Wednesdays at five o'clock?
Seems like it's working okay, I mean, we've got many controls of one way or the other, people feeling they can't attend.
No.
Seems like with, with the Zoom combo, um. Really, everybody can join in.
And, and we're, we're satisfied with the, the Zoom combo?
I think it's working okay.
And we apologize for the musical, musical rooms, cause, yeah, our next meeting is gonna be in the, uh, other courtroom upstairs, certain floor. So, and that, also I was gonna mention on the thirtieth, that meeting will be, um, in the city council chambers. So we're all just gonna be there.
They don't wanna meet here.
Well, I, I asked, actually, I asked, it's like, if you guys are doing in person meetings, can we just come to your place, and we don't have to worry about scheduling this?
That's true, they got their IT all.
Yeah. Cause there are certain times that we can't be in this room, when there's trials and things going on, the lawyers have their stuff in here, and they don't want us in here, but.
We're back downstairs, wait.
March is what we're hoping, so, we'll see.
Um, and the hybrid Zoom in person, we're all happy with. I think it's okay, I think this is, this, this is improvement over our last meeting here by a long shot.
Yeah.
So, good, good stuff.
Yeah, it's cause I'm here.
As far as the, as the commission training, and my first thought would be, let's wait till we got a full permission.
Okay, that's fine. We'll just keep it on here until we decide to do it, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When are applications due for the vacancy?
Um, so they usually give a couple weeks, I believe it's the, well, you weren't in the meeting, I think the first meeting in. February? Yeah, when somebody, or do interviews and possibly appoint somebody, I believe that's what.
Normally, interviews and appointment are done the same day, but I.
Yeah, 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 that, they would.
Is this a county, an unincorporated, or, or the county person, or?
Jeff was an unincorporated, but I don't know how many we have.
It's two and three, and, and Mr. Platt and I are the in cities.
I thought you were in Shu Hill or something.
Now that was, uh.
That was fun, retirement.
My understanding is that the vacancy is for a non-city person.
Yeah, that makes sense, cause Jack, I know he was.
Uh, so again, uh. Beat the bushes, promote it to your friends, if someone, if Mr. Platt's caliber walks into your office, run the random chance. Put the pipe, put the bite on, uh. All right, so let's just keep that on, uh, and then, and then. I, I wouldn't throw into that, that, once we get that scheduled, let us all contribute to that trading, in the past, that's been something that's been driven. By, by staff, but I think it, it's a two-way street, let's ask them what we want to learn about, as well as them telling us what they think we need to learn about. And, and that will probably be a, a special meeting, would be my, my expectation, again, just so we kind of know where we're headed.
That's fine.
That's what we've done in the past. Other thoughts on?
That's what I do, like meetings.
Training.
Is that, is that also a public meeting?
Anything we do will be public, anytime you're, there's three or more of you, it has to be public, so. We don't usually get a huge crowd.
No.
Maybe if we had like some pizza or something, we could get more people to come, I don't know.
Okay, our next regular meeting, uh, the, the schedule we just adopted would be February eighth.
Is that right?
Yes. And that would be at five o'clock, let's just stick with that. Okay, Commissioner comments, um.
Circuit Court, if you wanna.
Oh, and that'll be, it'll be here?
Yeah, it'll be up, upstairs in Circuit Courts. Another courtroom, a little bit smaller.
Did any of the commissioners, I have here, one thought, did any of you guys have a comment?
Yes.
Kind of moving on to item seventeen here. Right, I was just going to report that we have been having continuing discussions in DEQ, uh. Precipitated by our review of subdivisions over the last couple of years. Uh, I got quite an encouraging note from Keenan Hendon, who is the wastewater engineer at DEQ. Couple days ago, suggesting that they are going to make changes in the letters that we get. Uh, relative to their review of subdivisions, which we had suggested were inadequate. Uh, so I was pleased to see that, uh, anticipate that discussion going forward, and have solicited the participation of. My heterogeologic colleagues, including Mr. Heinz, still with us. Uh, so, again, looking forward to, to a, a more. Transparent relationship with DEQ, how we address subdivisions impacts and groundwater quality. So, happy to report, progress being made there. Um, okay, that's all I got, uh, we'll close out with citizen comments, uh, oops, we've worn them all down.
Just came on.
Oh, all right, okay, there you, there you, citizens of the world. Does anyone like to bring something before us? Looks like Mr. Mullins got his car, but Connor, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, thanks for taking my quick question, um, I may have missed it this evening, just cause I tuned in and tuned out, but I am curious. Uh, if there is any information you can provide this evening on, um, a timeline or process for. Um, filling, I, what I understand to be a, a recent vacancy on planning and zoning in Albany County.
Yes, good, good question, and we were just discussing that, our thought was that it's, it's going to be open until February meeting, you guys. Do we know that? Did, did you hear that, Mr. Mullins?
I think I heard deadline of January thirtieth, get your application in.
That's right.
Okay, sounds good, well, I'll, uh. Okay, I'll, I'll help spread the word, thanks for your time this evening, and have a good rest of your week, everyone.
That application is online, so yes, thank you for your interest, and, and, uh, yeah, God bless. Other comments from the public? Hearing none? Are there any objections to a adjournment? Hearing none, we are adjourned, thanks for your patience, we're getting out of here in good time.